Welcome to County Report this week. I'm Morna Vergili. Thank you for joining us. It may take awhile, but additional-
Additional agenda items. I'll just mention we don't have any minutes for this meeting to vote on. And on the upcoming meetings, next Monday, May 2nd, we have just one small budget amendment for the current fiscal year, and then the rest of the meeting is devoted to budget reconciliation. Monday, May 9th, we have a public hearing on Hilltop Road traffic calming, and then a work session discussion of the same. We have a regular- we have a resolution regarding the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan, and a work session discussion of administrative regulations for use of public space in public buildings. Monday, May 16th is Ward 6 night, and the first reading ordinances on the budget. And the following Monday, May 23rd, is second reading ordinances for the budget. And that takes us out a month. So that puts us to public comment period, if anybody would like to make any comments. We have upcoming, we have the public hearing on the budget and the constant yield rate, and a couple of regular meeting items, so if you have any comments on those, hold your comments for the public hearing and those voting items. Does anybody have any comments on items on a work session or not on this evening's agenda?
Hello. My name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, your favorite peace delegate. I've got a couple of announcements. One of them is on Mother's Day, May the 8th, we're having a peace demonstration down in the- down on the front of the White House. We do this every year. You know, Code Pink is putting it on, and we're inviting everyone here to come down and participate. It's a great way to show love for your mother and love for your children. Bring your mothers and your children and everybody else down to it. You know, it's promised to be a good day. Yep. The second thing is, is I don't know if you people are aware of this or not, but as of June the 1st, Verizon will no longer be offering time of day or the weather forecast services over the telephone anymore. They just want to make it harder for us, I guess. You know, because a lot of us, you know, when we're going out, we need to get the weather forecast before we head out, because you know how the weather's so fickle sometimes. And we- a lot of us don't have computers, either we can't afford them, or we can't see, or we have no hands to use the keyboard, or whatever. And we can't see the menus or anything, so it's going to cut a lot of our services out, because I used to rely on that a lot, to get my weather forecast. And also, if I wanted to set my watch for the time of day. Now, it's- they're literally not going to give us the right time of day anymore. Verizon is not going to give us the right time of day, or the weather forecast. I want you to be aware of that. It's June the 1st, that that kicks in. And also, I'd like to ask the city council, since all my nurses are having their birthdays in April and May, because Keisha Johnson is having her birthday right now as we speak. She's just- I think she turned 34. And she's a- she's my nurse on the weekend evenings, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. She's a wonderful person. And I'd like to know, if it's possible, that if the city could have a Nurses Appreciation Day somehow, to show our respect and our gratitude toward our nurses, who have- who do a lot for us. Because our surgeons and doctors would not be able to do what they do if it wasn't for the active duty of our nurses. They're the ones at the backbone of our healthcare system. And if it wasn't for them, I don't think I'd be alive today. And I'd like to know if it's possible, if Tacoma Park could set aside a Nurses Appreciation Day sometime in April or May, to show our great gratitude and our- and our respect for them, and our appreciation for the work, the hard work, the very hard work our nurses are doing. Some of them work two shifts at a time, some of them work 12, 18 hours straight sometimes in the hospitals. And some of them go from one client to another on home healthcare services, and then work in a group home or a nursing home at night. Benedicta does that. She works with me six hours in the daytime, and then has to go and work in a- in a group home at night until after midnight. And I'd like to know if it's possible, and I really think this city, as progressive as it is, we need to have a Nurses Appreciation Day. Thank you very much for letting me share.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, council members, Joe Edgell, 1001 Elm Avenue. I have just two quick things. One is, we have coming up on Thursday, a little movie, right here, called Bag It, covering plastic bags, plastics in everyone's lives. I want to thank the mayor for offering to sit on the panel discussion, which will be held after the movie. Really appreciate that. But I have a list here of attendees, and I'm not seeing too many council members listed as people who've registered for their free tickets.
I'll observe.
Got to get your free ticket, or you might not get a seat. There's a link. The city, anybody watching, can email bagitinfo@greenrenovation.us, and I can send them a link to get their free tickets, but I'd encourage you all to get your free tickets to the show, just in case we fill up. They actually are going fast. We've sold about 25 of the seats at this point, 25 percent of the seats at this point, so.
And "sold" is figurative?
Yep. Sold is free. Sold for zero dollars. We actually have a tracking system that allows us to get individual tickets, and you get on the system, you say whether you want an adult or a child ticket. The ticket's free. You actually print the ticket out on your computer, and then you bring it to the performance, and that's your entry. If there are additional seats, we will let people in without a ticket, if there are additional seats, but there's no guarantee you'll get in unless you have a ticket.
Kind of like a boarding pass?
Similar, except we're not going to do any enhanced body screenings.
And no extra charges for luggage or anything?
Well, actually, it depends on how big your bag is. The second thing I'd like to mention is the thing which I know I've mentioned a couple of times. I mentioned this specifically to the council and also the city manager. The pavement problems on Ethan Allen still are a problem, and I have now noticed after a traverse down Carroll Avenue yesterday, that now Carroll Avenue is a problem, and getting progressively worse. So I don't know what it's going to take to get these problems solved, but I don't care if you have to camp out on the president of the utilities doorstep. I would ask you to do whatever you could to actually get them to patch the pavement consistent with the way it was paved before. I think we spent, or the state spent a lot of money repaving Carroll, and they did a great job, and now it's screwed up again. Thanks.
Where? Where, Joe?
Where? Just, it would be by Lincoln. Just down the hill from Lincoln Avenue, maybe 100 meters or so. Give or take. And there's, by the way, dashed lines out to do actual more.
Yeah, that's going to be water lines.
Yeah, I know. It looks like it's going to get worse before it gets better, but there's no reason they can't. My dad worked for a water department, and I see I've got about 15 seconds left, but my dad worked for a water department, and they managed to patch the road back to about the same condition every single night, and it was just about as smooth as the road when they tore it up. So I know it's technologically possible. Where there's a will, there's a way, and apparently there's no will.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay, seen none. Council comments? Councilmember Schultz?
First of all, I want to thank the police department for a job well done this Friday, a Good Friday, because annually, the combined congregations of the Church of Our Lady of Sorrow's and St. Camilla's Church have a passion, sort of a passion play march that starts at Church of Our Lady of Sorrow's and comes down New Hampshire Avenue and up along Glen Side onto Wildwood, and from there, back all the way up, I don't know where it goes, I guess up to Carroll Avenue. And each year, the march has attracted more and more people of faith to this march, and over the last few years, it's gotten to be pretty scary with problems of people wandering across private property, through gardens, getting flowers and shrubbery. I don't know how to put this politely, but just getting a lot of damage unnecessarily. The- while we're delighted to see the march occur, and what it represents, the numbers have gotten into the realm of a couple thousand. This year, the police department managed to encourage the participants to stay in the street, between the cars and the curbs, and everything went smoothly. And boy, were we all, those of us who live along Wildwood Drive, delighted. I want to remind members of residents of Ward 6, particularly who live along Wildwood Drive and Holden Lane, that tomorrow night, the Department of Public Works is holding a sidewalk meeting at the rec center, starting at 7:30, to discuss the proposed sidewalks for the entire length of Wildwood Drive and Holton Lane between Wildwood and New Hampshire Avenue. That's- that would be Tuesday night. The following night, Wednesday night, a similar meeting is being held for people on the other side of New Hampshire Avenue, for- to talk about a proposed sidewalk to go along Erskine Street from 13th Street up to the city line, Prince George's County Line, city and county line. And so I- mailings have gone out. The Department of Public Works has actually today put hand notices in people's doorways. So I encourage people to come and participate, and let their opinions be known. If you cannot make the meeting, then you can certainly send emails and letters to the city, or you can send a neighbor or whoever, but make sure you participate in some way or another. If you don't participate, then I'll just be very blunt about it. This is, you know, then I don't want to hear, as your council member complains, that this process didn't include yourself, because it does, includes everybody. And finally, the last comment I want to make is, I noticed that on the rolling agenda for May the 9th, I believe it is, there is a resolution regarding the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan proposed. And I have not seen that resolution, but I believe its purpose is, of course, to endorse the proposed sector plan, and for- as it's- has been revised. But the residents have not actually seen that revised sector plan in all of its detail, and we want to make sure that that gets into the hands of all of our residents who want to see it, however that that can be done, so that we actually know what's going to happen. I just want to say that through no fault of the city, the- a number of residents are very, very- they're excited about the idea of the sector plan, but they're also very nervous about the sector plan because of its long-term implications, and they want to make sure, doubly or triply sure, that they understand exactly what is in store. In general, we're going to- the community is going to be supportive of it. But we just sort of do need to see the reality of the- of the sector plan that we're going to be- or passing a resolution on. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
And I'll just add that on the scheduling, on the discussion and resolution on the sector plan, that's being driven by the county council's hearings, and that's why we have that scheduled.
Yeah, I understand that the county council's going to be holding public hearings on this, at least once, maybe more, but at least later in May.
Yes. Councilmember Wright?
Just want to remind people that this Sunday, May 1st, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., is the House and Garden Tour, that's the historic Tacoma event. It is taking place in the Penn neighborhood, on streets like Holly and Cedar and Tulip, and you can buy tickets at the farmer's market, the co-op now and then, Mark's Kitchen, and you can also visit www historic Tacoma.org website for more information. Thanks.
Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, last few weeks, or I guess over the last few months, we've seen Mr. Edgell in the council meetings in the audience pretty regularly, and he's worn me down, I think. He hasn't even mentioned it, but I have- I went out and got a push lawnmower, and I tried to use this push lawnmower in my yard, and worked pretty good for the front yard, but I found when I got to the backyard, which is kind of a steep hill, that I didn't appreciate the suggestion. And so I just wanted to let everyone know that I am environmentally sensitive, I do want to be a good neighbor in the community, but that I'm not going to be using a unpowered or a human-powered lawnmower anymore. But as a compromise, I'd like to let the community know that I did purchase an electric lawnmower, so that maybe will benefit the environment a little more than the gas-powered lawnmower did, but.
And you have a- some kind of raffle or drawing for the push mower?
I have push mowers available, if anyone in the community is interested. They can please contact me at 301-565-0190, or at my email address, which is terry s@tacoma.gov.org. Thank you.
And I saw you reaching for your back while you were talking about that, and I thought you were going to tell us that you threw your back in.
Well, my back does have some problems now, and I haven't thought about that, attributed to it, but it may have to do with my- my community work, so, trying to be a good resident. But anyways, thank you for coming to meetings, Joe.
Councilmember Clay?
I think push mowers are best when you have children who can push them. Thanks for the reminder about Bag It. I was going to strongarm my colleagues tonight, but you've done a very nice job of it. So instead, what I'll do is help Councilmember Schultz get his online ticket. So about the road issue again, I know that, I think you, Suzanne, were going to find out if there is any kind of sanction, teeth, anything that the council has, other than camping out with sleeping bags and pup tents on the- you know, I'm going to answer you. Okay. But- because I think that that's, I mean, that's where we're at, essentially. We've yelled at them and cajoled them, and spent countless engineering hours, meeting with them out in the roads, and we've threatened to deny permits, and frequently, in the end, we- we- I think the public works director in particular, and I don't know who else has been involved, has done a very good job of getting the utilities to mill and pave, either from the center line to the curb or curb to curb, after they've done the work in the road, but we continue to have this problem during the- during the process, that it becomes dangerous, and I think it's particularly dangerous for bicyclists. And I know that Joe is an avid bicyclist, and has been wounded by falling into craters along the state highway. So it'd be great if we could get some kind of an answer to that. The other thing I want to say is that I was- I've been asked a couple of questions by constituents again this week, and one of them is if the city finances take-home cars for the council members, and the answer to that question is no, and I would have known if we had other people that got take-home cars, and I don't believe that we have any take-home, actually own take-home cars for anyone other than police, do we? And we may have people who occasionally take home a car at the end of a workday, because they're out late, far away from the city, and it would cost us more time, and it would let somebody take the car home and bring it back in to work the next morning, but we don't have people running around in take-home cars. And I have occasionally used the city cars, and I can assure you that they are not $48,000 fully-appointed Tahos or expeditions, or whatever those are. The other- the last comment that I wanted to make is, people also asked me again about why the city manager did not include copious amounts of environmental or green features in the budget, and the city manager did a very nice job, I think this- well, the city staff did a very nice job of laying out the variety of green initiatives in which the city is already engaged, and I think that- is that attached to this week's? It's dated- the letter's dated on the 21st, but I think that's attached to this week's.
Right. It's the original agenda packet that went out for this meeting.
Right. So that's- that's interesting. That was a conversation that the city manager and I had had, and I thought that that would be useful, and this was really nice, and I appreciate them pulling that together. But the other thing, and I think the more important thing to say about this, is that engaging in this, you know, proactive step towards doing more environmental activities is a policy shift. And even though we created the strategic plan, and we started with the sustainability, livability, and accountability, and we categorized the different activities that we were engaged in, and we looked at doing performance measures, and putting together a plan, I think the actual shifting of significant city resources is a policy decision that needs to be made by the council, and it's our job now, over the next few meetings, to set that policy and make the decisions about where that funding comes from, in partnership with the city manager, but it's not the city manager's job to set policy for the city, and in fact, if the city manager did that, many people would get really mad and write letters about that. So hopefully, in the- in the next couple of meetings, we'll see this process come forth, and we'll get some sense of collectively where the council is going around the sustainability or green policy issues, and how we're going to fund them, and maybe possibly even some notion of the direction for the future years as well. Thank you.
I just have two things I wanted to mention, both of them coming from the meeting last Thursday in Poolsville of the Maryland Municipal League, Montgomery County Chapter. We had a presentation from Pepco on something that they're going to be undertaking, starting very soon, and there's going to be some- a public information campaign, which will be informed by some of the suggestions that were made by my fellow elected officials on Thursday evening. Basically, Pepco got ARRA funding to help implement a whole changeover from everybody's residential electric meters to smart meters, and that effort is going to take place over the coming year. It's going to start supposedly in June of this year, and continue until June of 2012, rolling throughout the county, throughout Prince George's County. It's already well underway in the District of Columbia, and this replaces everybody's meter with a smart meter that individuals will be able to go onto their accounts on the web and monitor their electric use by the hour. There will be options for choosing different ways of having- of paying for your electric power, if you want to do things like time shift. So there's just a number of things that everybody in Tacoma Park and everybody in Montgomery County is going to be dealing with over the next year, and this was the first that everybody got information on it. If people feel that it would be helpful, we could always have them come to the city, to the city council, and make a presentation on this, but I just wanted to let the public know that this is coming, and that there will be options for how this changeover takes place. Basically, your power is going to be out for a couple of minutes while they pull the old meter and put the new meter in, so there's going to be efforts to make sure that people aren't surprised, say, working at home with the computer on, and all of a sudden, their power goes out, and it's because Pepco has pulled the meter and they didn't know it. So there are a number of ways that they anticipate dealing with this. They also have ways that they're going to deal with people who are on some critical machinery at their homes, or their place of business, so there's a whole program to deal with this, and the design of that program and how it gets dealt with is ongoing, so people, I hope, won't be surprised when this comes up. The other thing I just wanted to briefly report on was that we had a very lively discussion with the two newest county council members, council members Reamer and Rice, and one of the interesting things that came up out of that was touching on a subject that we had discussed here, I don't know, a week or two ago, in the budget discussions, in terms of the use of cable monies, and the ways in which our hands might be tied on having cable monies go strictly for capital purchases, and it sounds like the county and the county council are exploring ways to change that, and they are attempting to make some of those changes in the budget discussions that they are currently having about this year's budget. I'm not sure what sixth level of success they will have, and that's going to play out in the- in the cable, in the renegotiation of the cable, I don't know what the word is, contract, it's not contract, cable franchise agreement that will be coming up in a year. So just wanted to let everybody know that the same concerns that were expressed here were expressed by county council members, and that there should be a good bit of effort going into exploring how to make those changes. Councilmember Robinson?
Just a clarification. I remember the Pepco presentation, and it crosses my mind now, a question crosses my mind. If you don't get your energy services from Pepco but from someone else, will they still provide the analysis and the web-based interface? My assumption is yes, because they do provide the substructure, infrastructure, to deliver the powers, just to- so I don't- I didn't hear them say it.
That might be a good question to ask them.
Is that the meter? The meter. The meter? It's the meter that's gathering that data, like time of day and all that sort of stuff?
Yeah. So therefore, it might be delivered.
Therefore, it will be.
Whichever company is providing those services, however it's divided up, somebody will provide that access.
I know that the meter would be changed, and that the meter would measure whoever's electricity is entering your house. I guess my question is, would Pepco provide the website analytic services, whether you're buying your actual power from Pepco or from someone else? I didn't hear them address that, but it comes to my mind now.
We can ask them.
Yeah. I'd like to know, it would be nice to know that they would provide those services.
Right. They continue to provide the transmission lines and services, regardless of where the power comes from.
That's right.
So they're responsible for the metering stuff.
And another interesting aspect of it is that it will enable them to tell from their smart meter if you have lost power. So supposedly, the last gasp that the meter does before power is lost is it sends out that signal that, hey, power's lost here, and they claim that it will enable them to fix power loss at various locations because of things like tree limbs falling on power lines, much more quickly, because they'll be able to isolate it and get things going again remotely, rather than having to send crews out to figure out which things to isolate. So there was a lot of information, and if it lives up to its advanced billing, it will make- it will improve the situation. We'll wait and see. But there will be a lot of people wanting to know a lot of things as this goes forward. That's it for council comments. Does the city manager have any comments?
Just one item. The chief had asked for an opportunity to briefly address the council and the community.
Good evening. Just want to remind everyone, this Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00, in the police station lobby, we're going to participate in the Drug Enforcement Administration Prescription Drug Takeback Day. This was done in September, in coordination, local law enforcement set up sites at police stations throughout the country, and in September, Americans turned in over 121 tons of unused prescriptions, pills that expire, unused pills or unwanted prescription drugs. So we're going to be set up in the lobby there, Saturday. You can bring anything you want in. The service is free, it's anonymous, and for those that are always worried about Big Brother looking over you, the federal government actually passed a law, so you can bring them in, and it's anonymous, and it's free, and you're allowed to do it. So if you got stopped between your home and there for some reason, then you're okay. So we want to encourage everyone to do it. We didn't participate last time, but we want to encourage all our residents, a good chance to clean out the medicine cabinet. For those parents with kids, it's a good thing to do. A lot of us get prescriptions. The older you get, I learned, I used to- The older you get, I learned, I used to kid my parents, well, now we all collect them. And there are a lot of pills that you get. Chance to bring in the containers, the pills, unload them at the station, we'll take care of them, they'll be disposed of. Searity from 10:00 to 2:00, we welcome everyone, we'll be right in the lobby, you don't have to walk far, just pour it in, you don't have to say a word. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay. Suzanne, do we have any legislative update? Nothing. Okay. Therefore, we will go to our public hearing, and we have two public hearings this evening. The first one is on the fiscal year 2012 budget. Nobody is signed up. Would anybody like to testify at the public hearing? Going once, going twice. Okay. Mr. Lovelace wants to testify at the public hearing on the proposed budget for FY 2012.
Yes. I'd like to, when you guys are doing the budget and everything, I'd like you guys to remember, like I said last week, or last month, that it's not your money you're spending, you're spending the money of a lot of people who don't have it this year. Some people have to decide whether they want to pay their taxes, or they want to pay their food, or they want to pay their rent, or they want to, or they can't afford to pay their food, or their rent, or their heat. And we've got to remember, too, that we've got to spend this money very wisely. We've got to decide whether we want this service or this product, or whether we need it. If we need it, that's different. If it's just because we want it to look better than anybody else, I'd say no. We can wait on some things because of the way the economy is today. I'd really encourage you people to really think a dollar can only be spent once, and then it's gone. And remember, that's not our, your, our dollar, that's the dollar of everybody in the city that we're spending on. And some of those people, this time next year, may be homeless. You know, some of them may be going hungry. Some of them may not be able to afford their health care, or their, or their heat next winter. They may not be able to afford their conditioning this summer. So please, when you really put, do the budget, and you really want to vote on the budget, remember, it's whether we need it or whether we want it. There's two different words there, needs and wants. We've got to separate them, the way this economy is going now. I don't see, think the economy is getting as good as they think they should, it is. And I think we should be prepared in case it takes another downturn. We should always be prepared for that, because remember, we're spending the money of the needy, as well as the, as the greedy, and as well as the ones who have a lot. So remember, please, be very careful in how we use this money. Our lives depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I will bring the public hearing on the fiscal year 2012 budget to a close, and we will move to our second public hearing, which is a public hearing on the constant yield tax Does somebody need to read language from that?
I don't know that it's required, but certainly we can just sort of talk about, the purpose of tonight's hearing is, in accordance with Maryland law, the constant yield tax rate is calculated by the Department of Assessments and Taxation for each taxing authority in the state, and it represents a tax rate for the coming tax year that would generate the same amount of revenue that was generated during the current fiscal year. Obviously, in communities like Tacoma Park, where property values are increasing, the constant yield tax rate will decrease, and if the, if it is proposed to impose a tax rate higher than the constant yield tax rate than a public hearing is required. The city has complied with the advertising requirements for this public hearing. So that's really the purpose. One of the requirements of the law is that the real property tax rate either must be set this evening, or at a later time, if announced at the time of the hearing. Clearly, the council is just starting its budget reconciliation process later this evening, so I don't think we're in a position to say what the tax rate will be at this time. So I will just announce that the, based on the current meeting agenda, first reading of the tax rate establishment ordinance is scheduled to take place on May 16th, with final passage on May 23rd. And we do need to have this done within that timeframe, as we're required to provide our real property tax rates to Montgomery County, which does billing for us prior to the end of May.
Okay. Is there anybody signed up? Does anybody wish to testify at the constant yield tax rate hearing? Seeing none, I will call the constant yield tax rate hearing to a close, and we will move to our regular meeting agenda. And first up is a second reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code to regulate panhandling and prohibit aggressive panhandling.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. I'm tempted to want to just go through real quickly what this does. We've had the first reading, but just to point out that what this does and what it does not do. It bans panhandling in three circumstances. It would prohibit any panhandling at night. It would prohibit panhandling at any time in locations such as sidewalk cafes, bus stops, taxi stands, near banks and ATMs, and from popular occupants of motor vehicles. This is included on the occupants of motor vehicles, because solicitations create a safety hazard for pedestrians, vehicle drivers, and panhandlers, and contribute to traffic congestion. And third, it would prohibit aggressive panhandling at all times. And it does not preclude passive panhandling, which is standing, sitting, or performing music with a sign requesting donations without a vocal request for money, other than in response to an inquiry by another person. And so requesting donations by a sign, a boot, or similar indications that a donation is being sought are not prohibited. It only crosses over into the prohibition if the person requesting voices, words, to the effect of, "Give me money." And this does not regulate legitimate sales transactions, such as selling flowers, bottled water, food, or other goods not covered by the ordinance. Those transactions may be restricted or regulated by state law, or county law, or health regulations, or other parts of the Tacoma Park Code. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear on what this does and does not do. Councilmember Simmons.
As you might expect, I'm not clear. The, as I understood what you said, that a person holding a sign, standing on a median would be okay then, as long as they didn't verbalize a request for donation?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
We, the, during the first reading, I believe, the ordinance was suggested to make illegal panhandling from medians. But I gather that has been deleted from the ordinance, such that...
Let's make sure.
In D-2, it specifically says, it addresses that issue.
It does. In D-2?
I think that this, the difference from what we talked about before and today is in the interpretation that if it's a, if it's a boot, or a sign, or something like that, it would be permissible, but the panhandling would be an audible request for money.
If I can double-check with clerk and the city manager to make sure that that is correct?
Yeah.
I believe it is.
I believe, from the way panhandling is defined, it means a solicitation in which a person requests an immediate donation, and so on, includes but not limited to seeking donations by vocal appeal, or offering an item of little or no monetary value in exchange for a donation. So the, it's, it's not, as I understood the city attorney's explanation, as long as it's not vocalized, it's not covered by that.
We've got our chief of police here, who is going to be having the people who enforce this. Could we get your opinion, since you're kind of where the rubber meets the road? So to speak.
I'm fine with it, but I, I think if you look under policy, the Maryland traffic law specifically prohibits people from solicitation from the roadway, which does include mediums. That's under policy in the back.
Our understanding was that...
Not to put confusion, but I'm just telling what's there.
Our understanding was that the roadways did not include medium.
No, Maryland traffic law says medium. And that hasn't changed since you all started.
Then why are we doing this? I thought this was requested so you could enforce it.
You can't stand there, so there's not a problem.
Plus, I mean, why, I don't understand why this even came to the council if that was...
Well, some of it was...
We already have a law.
Some of it was cleaning up the language and redefining it. It was a language which didn't meet the constitutional safeguards. Believe me, I didn't request this.
I didn't need it.
It claimed to not... My constitutionally allows certain things. Maryland traffic law only allows certain things.
My recollection from the discussion from last week or two weeks ago, whenever we discussed this, that the city attorney said that the median, that the raised median was not included in the Maryland definition of roadway. And therefore, we were, it was up to us to deal with the median.
And that's why D-1 is in there, right? And D, and if I may, this panhandling defined says includes but is not limited to seeking donations by vocal appeal, which, my reading of that is, if somebody holds their hand out, that's panhandling. Just reading, just reading the definition here.
Unless they're trying to shake your hand.
Unless they're trying to shake your hand.
Mayor.
Yes.
I think, obviously, I think there's a number of different interpretations, depending on which section we're looking at. I think, just so the council is absolutely clear before you vote on this, I think my recommendation would be that you hold over second reading until next week, and give us a chance to ask the city attorney's office to clarify that specific point.
Yeah.
I agree with what Jesse said, but then when the chief brought up the policy...
It's right there.
The statement is that this law is supplementing Maryland vehicle law, and would prohibit persons of engaging in solicitation from in the roadway, and prohibits the solicitation of persons in motor vehicles from median sidewalks, parking lots, near a roadway. So I think there's just enough ambiguity that I would prefer that we get that point clarified for you before you vote on this.
Thank you.
Okay. So we need to table this until next week?
We need to table, but I just want to ask the chief a question.
Okay. Go ahead. Do that first.
Do we have to come back then again?
We'll, hang on. We'll get Councilmember Clay's...
So, chief, my question is, if someone is in the median, and it may be different for whether or not they're in a median that has, is raised with a curve around it, versus whether they're standing on a painted yellow line, are they jaywalking?
When they're on the median?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I move to table.
Just a second. Councilmember Robinson, your light is still on. Did you get your comment?
Yeah, I got mine.
Okay.
Are you going to solicit other comments?
I was, I was gonna, since the question came up from a member of the public who wished to comment on this, I think I'd like to take his comment, so that he may not have to come back, but he may want to, depending on what the answer to this is. And then we'll move to table.
I think we should make him come back.
No, I appreciate you not making me come back. Joe Edgell, again. The ordinance, as I'm reading it, says panhandling during darkness is prohibited. It shall be unlawful to engage in an act of panhandling on any day between sunset and sunrise. And so my, this is really more of a question in the form of a comment, in the form of a question. How do you define sunset and sunrise? Is it civil twilight, nautical twilight, astronomical twilight? I'm kind of curious. You know, as a lawyer myself, I usually recommend that we write things clearly, so that there's no room for clever people to get out of things, and so that the ordinance is clear.
Or clever pan...
No offense to the city attorney, but you need to define this, and it's not very well-defined. The ordinance is not put together in a number of ways very well, and maybe the city attorney needs to start over.
Thanks for your comments. I think we can get clarification from the city attorney on that point as well. Now, Councilmember Clay.
Move to table.
Okay.
Seconded by Councilmember Snipper. All those in favor of tabling until next week?
Mayor. The city clerk was recommending that maybe you table it until May 9th, just to make sure that it did not interfere with the budget reconciliation process next week.
So noted.
Friendly amendment. Until May 9th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That is tabled until May 9th. The other regular meeting item is the second reading ordinance awarding a contract for lighting and CD TV technology improvements. Somebody like to move that?
Move.
Second.
It was moved by Councilmember Snipper and seconded by somebody over here.
Josh.
Okay. Councilmember Wright. Any council comments? I'm assuming, let's see, I'm going to wipe out the lights since they haven't left any comments. Councilmember Robinson.
I still don't agree about the $9,065 for our six or seven buttons, but I intend to vote for it anyway, and I'll justify it by saying that $9,000 is below the $10,000 that we would have to, that would force it to come before us. So even though I disagree, I'm going to vote for this.
Okay. And I think it's nine buttons. Anybody else? Any public comment on this second reading ordinance? Seeing none, it's a second reading ordinance, we'll click, please call the rule.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Okay. That passes unanimously. We will now move to the consent agenda. I'll just note that we have two resolutions on it. Resolution providing for appointments to the recreation committee and the facade advisory board. Somebody like to move the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Snippers, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes unanimously. Let's head into the budget reconciliation discussion. We'll take a break a little later. I'm assuming we're going to need a break a little later.
Makes you think we don't need one now.
It's too early. Let me just first say that I'm hoping that we can make sure that we get all of the items on the table this evening. I think it would be good for us to make sure that as we reconcile our proposed changes to the budget, that we have everything on the table. As, as we do that, I'd like to avoid, to the extent that we can, any proposals coming later in the process. As, as we get to the very end, and then somebody comes up with something else, that may just happen organically, but if there's anything that can come up now, it's much better to have it all, so we consider all of it as a package. We've tried to get, make sure that we get all of the information together. There have been requests by the city manager on a number of occasions to make sure that if we need any numbers put on any proposals, that staff have a chance to look at those. And so that, I think, is, continues to be a request that we need to heed, and if we come up with any additional items tonight during discussion, that the staff can have a chance to look at those, because it's hard to reconcile items that don't have budget numbers attached to them. And I know the city manager had a couple of things that you just wanted to provide us that are additional pieces of information on some requests that have already been made.
Sure. I'll be brief, because obviously, this is your evening to talk, not mine. Just wanted to call everyone's attention that there was some additional information passed out this evening. It's a salmon sheet. There were some additional reconciliation items that have been added to the memo that went out in the original packet. There was also...
There was also some information that I had received from Darrell regarding the rewards for recycling proposal that has been discussed by a number of council members that was distributed this evening, and also some updated equipment replacement reserve projections. Just very briefly, you know, as the council goes about its reconciliation process, did want to just make a few comments about the equipment replacement reserve. In the original packet information, I had included sort of a chronology and history of what has happened with the equipment replacement reserve over the years. We had better data in terms of the contributions than we did about outflows, mainly because of the change in the city's financial system. But if you've had a chance to look at that, and I've mentioned this probably in numerous budgets during my tenure with the city, the city, over the years, has been inconsistent in making contributions to the equipment replacement reserve. We have been somewhat in a catch-up mode because of that inconsistent funding. During my tenure, we have also made a concerted effort to make sure we were capturing all the items. And as I noted in the original budget materials, for example, we were including, for reasons that are unknown, police cars in the equipment replacement reserve when I arrived here. And clearly, as we have moved into the take-home car program for the police department, that has become even more important because of the financial implications for that. As I mentioned, we have been in somewhat of a catch-up mode in recent years. That is something that I have made a priority and have commented on that in every budget transmittal message I have done in Tacoma Park. Part of the reason why I wanted to give you some projections of the outflows is just to give you a sense of the magnitude. I think it can be very easy to look at one particular year in isolation, and this would be my responsibility to point out to you all is what the implications are going forward. The council has in its strategic plan an element about financial sustainability, and certainly planning for the future replacement of your equipment is an important part of that. As the council is aware, in my proposed budget, I had recommended a contribution of $750,000 to the equipment replacement reserve and the establishment of a facility maintenance reserve with an initial contribution of $250,000. I will say the facility part of it is still something that Darrell and Yvonda and I are trying to get our arms around. We had a lot of equipment that went into this building as part of the community center construction, which eventually will need to be replaced. And we do plan to spend a lot of time in FY12, trying to get a handle on those items and what their life expectancy is and what the future replacement costs may be. So we're not able to provide you a lot of information on that front, though I will say with the items we have identified, they do exceed the $250,000 that I have suggested as an initial allocation. On the equipment replacement reserve front, one of the things I included in the packet was what happened if we contributed 750 this year and 500,000 ongoing. And if you've had a chance to look at the packet, either the one that went out originally or the updated one from this evening, you will see that we don't even get out to 2026 before we end up in a deficit position, not only being unable to fund the capital that will be due for replacement in that year, but that means we would also have no funding going forward. So I just would encourage you, as you go about your deliberations, to give some serious consideration to the equipment replacement reserve, to take a long-term perspective on it. And probably more important than anything is for the council to get a comfort level as to what level of funding we are going to commit to the equipment replacement reserve on an ongoing basis, similar to the discussion the council has had in the past about street rehabilitation. They're equally important parts of your infrastructure in maintaining that. As Councilmember Clay noted, there was included in the agenda packet sort of more comprehensive information about environmental initiatives and what we will be doing in FY12. Some of those have budget implications, some do not. I hope the information was helpful to you and I think gave, hopefully gave you a better sense of what we're doing on the environmental front. This, I imagine, will be a topic of discussion this evening and probably Monday evening, next Monday evening as well. One of the things I included in the original agenda packet was a suggestion that the council may want to give some consideration to hiring a sustainability coordinator or a farm initially on a contract basis. There's been lots of interest expressed by the council, and perhaps there's more consensus than I realize, but from a staff perspective, I'm not sure we have a good grasp about what specifically you want to be doing on the environmental front and what the budget implications are of that. One option the council may wish to consider is just allocating a certain amount of money for environmental initiatives to give you the opportunity to better refine your plan, but set aside some funding, not in a specific sense, whether that's a position or consulting contract, but just to give you the chance to sort of put a little bit more meat on the bone in terms of the proposals, at least that I've heard to date. The big change, I guess, since I submitted my budget, was the addition of highway user revenues. There were obviously some revenue sources in the general fund as originally submitted that we also suggested the council reduce. The net amount of that funding is just under $104,000, if my math is correct. At this point, pending any council direction, that funding is unallocated. From a council perspective, clearly you can either allocate that funding to some type of expenditure project, you can address that issue on the revenue side of things. In the absence of council direction about that approximately $104,000, it will simply fall to fund balance. So that is obviously something that you may want to talk about this evening or next Monday. As the council is aware, we are engaged in lobbying efforts with the county council regarding tax duplication payments. We got a positive signal, at least from the GO committee, that this issue was placed on the reconciliation list, both for the general tax duplication payments that would impact all municipalities, as well as the Tacoma Park tax duplication payment. We will not have any resolution of that issue probably until very late in the budget process. In fact, you may have already adopted your budget before it's resolved. So that's kind of another unknown, but unfortunately, we're not going to be able to provide any information on that since the matter's essentially out of our hands. And then I guess the closing comment I would just make is, more than anything, I guess I'm here tonight to try to figure out where you want to go, what changes you want to make on the budget. I would encourage the council not to get all caught up in terms of how to fund things. If you can let me know where you want to go, I would appreciate the opportunity to talk to Yvonda and certainly some of the staff about what the best way to fund some of your initiatives may be. Obviously, Yvonda and I work with the budget every single day, and I think we could be a good resource to you in terms of trying to figure out how to fund some things. That's it. Thank you very much.
Okay. And I note that we have maybe all of the department directors here?
I asked all of them to be there. Obviously, you threw us a curve by being ahead of schedule. I'm trying to do a quick head count and see if everyone is here, and I, I know Deborah and Gregory, I think, and Karen are still to arrive.
Okay.
Yeah, they will be here.
But it's intended that they will all be here.
They will all be here.
And so I would just say that if it, I'd like to take the opportunity, when appropriate, to see if we anticipate that we have, we either don't have any questions or clarifications that we think we might need from a particular department head, or that all of those areas have been answered, so that it might be possible for one or more of them to know at some point that we've dealt with everything in their area, and they could go home as opposed to sticking around all night until we finish and then dragging in for the rest of the week. So anything that we can do to try and focus anything on a particular area, or if we know ahead of time that, say for instance, we think that, you know, nothing that we're discussing affects Department X, then we could, we could make sure that that department director can leave. And also, as we go through the process, it may be advantageous if we get to a certain point on some things to take some straw votes, and that might be helpful in providing direction to the city manager on where we're going, so that she knows whether she needs to further refine numbers on that area or not. So we'll try and use straw votes as well if that becomes advisable. So first, I will look to a couple of my colleagues who have comments. You want to start off? And Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. One, I want to, well, I should comment. One, I want to thank the city manager and all the staff for the amazing amount of effort in the general environmental area that's occurred in the past, in the recent past. I know that there's been a lot of attention in the city to this, and it's really nice to see it all laid out and put together. There's always more you can do, but it's nice to see how much the city is doing and has done in the recent past. The second thing I want to say is that I'm really appreciative of the table on the unrestricted general fund balance reserve numbers, because the table indicates that we're getting down to about that 18% number that has been recommended by the government Finance Officers Association, which seems to be the received wisdom on what that level should be. So I was very glad to see that. Of course, there'll be changes as we go through the reconciliation process to that actual number, but at least we're starting out with where we should be. I have a question about the facility maintenance reserve, the new fund. Can you just describe a little bit how this issue was handled in past years? It's a new fund. What did we do before?
It will become a new fund when the council actually adopts an ordinance.
Yes.
It's your call.
Okay, thank you for the correction.
I think it's been a little bit mixed, to be honest with you, Councilmember Snipper. As I, I think I may have mentioned before, I think there are certainly some items that have been facility-related that we have captured in the equipment replacement reserve. Roofs, some of it more tenured members of the council may remember, we pulled funding from the ERR for some roof replacements. Boilers, things of that nature. So I think we have captured some facility items, but it certainly hasn't been comprehensive. And I think that's part of the, I guess, rationale for actually creating a facility maintenance reserve, because I think it would provide a little bit more focus. I think this was actually something that Councilmember Wright may have brought up a couple of years ago. You know, and certainly...
So you would be distinguishing, for example, a roof is a classic.
Right.
You know, it's not a police car or a trash truck.
Right.
But it is something that you know is going to, these things have to be replaced every, whatever it is, 20 years or something.
Right, I mean, I think you can look at the seats in the auditorium, the carpet in the auditorium, things of that nature would be encompassed by a facility maintenance reserve. So if it's not, it's not a backhoe, it's not a car.
Right.
It would be moved to the facility maintenance, be captured in the facility maintenance reserve as opposed to an equipment replacement reserve.
Right. And so essentially, prior to this proposal, it was taken out of the...
The equipment replacement reserve? Most items were...
The equipment replacement reserve or just the general fund?
Correct.
Right. Okay. So this is a way of, in a sense, systematizing and organizing this particular activity?
Right. I think we've had, as I mentioned, some elements of it. I just wouldn't say it's been as comprehensive as we would like.
Right. Do you think there'll be, do you have a pretty clear sense of the differences between equipment replacement and, you know, we aren't going to get into hair splitting about which fund it should come out of? I mean, you know, there are always, always gray areas, but is it, in general, pretty clear?
Yeah, I think so. Darrell and I have talked some, Yvonda's been involved in the process as well. I think we would take some things that you could classify as equipment, such as a boiler. Is it equipment? Yes. I think we would probably deem that to be more of a facility item, because I think equipment typically denotes more vehicles, leaf vacuums, things of that nature. So I don't think we'll have a lot of trouble delineating that.
Okay. Let's see where it was. Yes. On the equipment replacement reserve, the tables you've provided, including the ones tonight, all show a flat amount in the, I'll call it out-years for this. It seems to me that, that isn't how we would, and it doesn't seem like the policy we would adopt. It seems like the policy we would adopt would be, and this is really a question, even though I may not get to make it sound like one, it seems like the policy we would adopt would be that that amount we contribute every year would grow by some formula or general sense of how it should get bigger, whether it should get bigger because we buy a bunch of new equipment and therefore the contribution needs to get bigger because we now have more equipment or something. So I, I do wonder a little bit about the, the way this calculation shows out, because you're going out, you know, 20 years, you're going out a really long way. And it's hard for me to think that the council would adopt a flat amount year after year, or even that you would recommend it.
I guess what I would say is, I wouldn't necessarily look at this as saying this is a specific funding proposal, more than anything else, truthfully. It was to illustrate that $500,000 a year may seem like a lot of money, but it does run out. So it was really trying to show you two different figures and plugging those in to illustrate what that means for the city's ability to fund its future capital. I mean, I'm going to look to Yvonda a little bit. I don't know that I'm necessarily uncomfortable with having a flat amount, per se. I think one of the challenges, if you start basing your funding level on what's going in or out of a particular year, is I think it doesn't give that long-range picture that I'm trying to get through and hopefully institutionalize long after all of us on this dais are gone. Because I do think it's something that as I put together a budget or a future city manager does, or as this council reviews a budget or future city councils do, having some sense of what the annual funding level should be, I think is helpful to have institutionalized. So it just becomes sort of part of the budget culture in the city that that's a priority and that that amount needs to be funded, because I think the lack of that, I'm just guessing since I wasn't here at the time, may have contributed to some of the problems in kind of past administrations. It can, it's the same principle, I think you see sometimes with cities not taking care of their streets, because it's an easy thing not to fund, but it does have very midterm and long-term consequences for a city. So it...
I'm, in general, agreement, in agreement with what you're saying and proposing. I guess my concern was a little more about if I were going to write this up, I would, because you are going out a very long way, I would include as, what is the council thinking about? Council's thinking about bringing it up to, the first couple of years are bringing it up to a, to a solid level, and then the rest of the years are maintaining it solvent, if you will. And for me, I can't really see level funding for that. So to me, I would rather write this up, or writing up sort of a policy going forward, that we have the transition period where we're getting up to the right level, let's call it, you know, that little first year or two, and then that it would go at whatever the figure is, let's say it's 500, just to pick one, but with the expectation that it would increase over time. Maybe it would be every five years or three years, you would step back and see how are we doing, something like that, rather than as indicated here, that you're just flatlining it into the out-year. So my preference would be for whatever the figure we picked, 500, 600, whatever that figure is, but that it would also have a second clause that said, and this would be revisited, or this would be increased periodically, or some language like that to indicate that it's the council's policy to, to make sure it remains solvent, without having to, you know, 15 years down the road, we now have to add another big dollop to avoid that problem. That's, that's my comment, I guess.
Yeah, I think the only thing I would add is, I mean, we actually have numbers out. I'm certainly happy to share those with you. Like I say, once again, I think this was designed to be more illustrative than anything else. If I were to, you stop at some point, but if I had put 2031 on the page, you would have seen a $1.4 million number in that year. Once again, I mean, I think this is obviously part of the budget process, and the council does set the funding level through the budget process. Might say my only caveat is just making sure that this doesn't become what I believe it has in the past, which is a very easy place just for a city council to avoid funding, because I think that's part of the reason why we have the problem we do now. because I think that's part of the reason why we have the problem we do now. But certainly open to whatever suggestions. I say this is not necessarily meant to suggest that $600,000 is the right level. I can tell you that $500,000 a year is not the correct level. We will run into problems not that far out.
And that's why I was, that's what got me thinking about, would it really be, is it really council policy that it would be flat? And I don't think that's what I would want to vote for.
Okay.
Flat meaning?
A fixed amount. Okay. Flat funding out. Sorry.
And what I'd like to do is just kind of follow up with any more questions about these particular areas you've already brought up so that we don't get into other items that you get into and then everybody's going, but wait a minute, I have something that goes back to that.
Right.
So if we can go there for a second.
That's why I'm stopping. I have other things, but I'm stopping.
Okay. And I've got a couple of quick follow-ups that are related to that and then I'll check with other colleagues. The, I just want to make sure that we're clear that on the facility reserve and the equipment replacement reserve, that what we're looking at for this proposed budget, for city manager's proposed budget, is $750,000 for the equipment reserve and $250,000 for the facility reserve. So it's a total of $1 million this year, which, prior to this consideration of this budget, those items would have been pulled out of only the equipment replacement reserve. If we didn't establish it, we would be looking at, gee, we really need to pull $1 million out. Or some other figure, that we're essentially looking at the past history and saying we can address it in the two ways and that, so that we're really talking about those two figures tied together in terms of looking at what we've done in the past.
Somewhat. What is, probably, I would make two comments that are different from the past. The numbers for the equipment replacement reserve that are before you this evening do presume that the items that I had moved to the speed camera fund, or moved to the speed camera fund, that the equipment replacement reserve is not bearing that financial burden.
So it would have been even worse?
It would have been even worse. Yes. Right. That's correct.
So that there are at least two other factors that make this number lower than it would have been otherwise.
Right. And I would mention just, in the interest of, you know, on the facility maintenance reserve, we did have some kind of back and forth between Darrell, Yvonda, and myself because for some of those items, there is some arguably accrued funding for those facility items that we have documented and are aware of, that were being funded out of the E R R. We, I think at this juncture, did not plan on moving that funding to the facility maintenance reserve. That was just gonna start out kind of anew, mainly because it just seemed to be an unnecessary accounting exercise since there were some funding issues in the E R R to begin with. So I don't know, Mayor, if that answered the question.
I just want to make sure that we tie all those together in our minds as we think about it. And I had a follow-up on council member Snippers' question about the, or observation about the 18% fund balance. And what was different about that in the chart that you gave us was the unreserved percentage as opposed to the reserved percentage was always much higher and it, in the last, the trend has been downward. And this year, they're much closer together than they had been. Only a couple of years ago, it was 80% unreserved and 20% reserved, and now we're at 5644. Can you just say briefly why that is?
I think so. I'm gonna look to Yvonda in case I don't capture everything. I think it's a combination of a couple factors. One is increased funding level to the equipment replacement reserve. That has, if you go back and look at the history, that has certainly been increased over the last couple of years to try to deal with the funding issues. We have also drawn down some of the unreserved fund balance. It was a conscious decision to pay for a good chunk of the public works facility renovation with cash since we had it. And also in the 2012 budget as proposed, we would be using some of the unreserved fund balance to pay off, to do an early redemption of the initial community center bond. And to that point, I would just mention that obviously as a percentage of expenditures, the 18%, there are some one-time items such as the early redemption of the bond I just mentioned that are embedded in the current year expenditures. So that does skew the percentage a little bit.
Okay. Thanks. And just one final observation. Obviously, we're talking about what the city might have done in the past, what the council might have done in the past. I recalled one or two things that I might just repeat so that people know why we got to where we did as opposed to, gee, nobody remembers. When the equipment replacement reserve was first set up, it was because there was, I think, like a million dollars that seemed available to do it in about 1990 or '91 and somewhere in that area. And so it seemed like a good thing to do. And when it was originally set up, there was a dollar figure, and I don't remember what that was, and it was essentially, gee, everything that costs more than X, every individual item that costs more than X should be accounted for in this. And then as time went on, people started looking at, well, gee, we forgot to include X. Or, gee, there are these other things that are a little bit below that figure, shouldn't we put them in too? So the minimum figure for inclusion in that started creeping down as we started adding more things in. And then what happened at the end of that process was that things, there was a period of time where things looked to be fairly well-funded and we had included a lot of things that seemed like we were getting down to cheaper cars and that they were all included. And it was like, gee, we've done a pretty good job. And then there was a year or two where it was like, well, gee, we've done a pretty good job and we can get by without funding it this year because it looks like, depending on however many years you look out, we're okay. And then with the benefit of hindsight and increased costs for some items like, I want to say trash trucks, I could be wrong, but there were some things that came back much more expensive than had been anticipated and set aside for, then all of a sudden things flipped the other way. So I think it speaks to the idea of a policy of understanding that you can't just change horses in midstream and go with zero because you think it looks good for a couple of years, that there has to be that recognition of that long-term outlook.
Can I follow on to that?
Yeah. And then I want to get to other folks.
Yeah. No, it's a follow-on question to this. So when, it's pretty obvious when you purchase, to follow up this, when you purchase a trash truck, you essentially are saying, because you know what the depreciation schedules and all that sort of thing are. Are you also doing, you mentioned the boiler. Are you also, when you buy a new boiler, I'm just picking boiler, will that also now go in, kind of following up on what Bruce was saying, now go into one of these other funds as something you're gonna keep track of to help figure out what the level is?
Yeah. Part of what we did, Yvonda, I think it was several years ago, I think it was once, you know, Yvonda and I were both on board, we're talking to Darrell about the, like, police car issue and recognizing that there were some things that were not captured for whatever reason. I know Yvonda and Darrell spent quite a bit of time going through the city's fixed asset records, trying to just make sure that we were doing as good a job as we could of accounting for what we knew of through that record process. But yeah, I think it will be a continual process. The other thing, some of you may recall, it came up when we were buying trash trucks and suddenly things were much more expensive than we had anticipated in the equipment replacement reserve. That was because, and Darrell, correct me if I'm wrong, I think there had been some federal regulatory changes in terms of emissions that, you know, significantly increased the cost of the vehicles. And I think as we had talked to the council about a year or so ago, part of what we're now trying to do is a year or so out before the item is to be purchased, is to kind of go through, test the market, make sure that the pricing we have in the equipment replacement reserve is reflective because a lot of our vehicles have anywhere from, you know, eight to 13-year life spans. Sometimes what you think something's gonna cost 13 years in advance isn't what it ends up costing. So we modified our procedures just to sort of get an earlier sense of whether the pricing that we had anticipated is still valid.
Okay. Thank you.
And I want to go to my other colleagues. I don't want you to feel slighted.
I am feeling slighted.
But I also don't want to kind of get off this area of discussion and then have to circle back to it. So I'll look at other colleagues who haven't had anything to say on this particular area so far to see if you have things on this, and then I'll go back to the order on other stuff. Council member Wright and then council member Schultz.
So I was trying to look and see on the historical numbers, because one of the things, really the point of the equipment placement reserve or the facility replacement reserve is really this as a smoothing function. They're trying to like average out and pay over time so you don't get socked in any one year. Another way you could do that would be decide to take on debt to smooth. You can either save or you can take on debt. So one of the things I was trying to understand is, on the historical numbers, we have the contribution there. We know that's like a solid number. Is the E R R expenditure, that might not actually be what we spent on equipment, right? That's just what we took out of the reserve, correct?
It was actually items that were purchased with, out of the E R R. So it was going to be equipment.
But there could have been other items that were purchased that were equipment that didn't come out of the E R R. Is that correct?
That's, oh, that's correct. Yes.
So that using those historical numbers wouldn't necessarily be a good measure of how much we spent on equipment?
I'm gonna look to Darrell. I think it's actually...
Maybe a few thousand.
Yeah. I think it's possible with the early years, for example, with police cars, those would have been, what we did, just to be clear, is there's actually a code in the current financial structure for items paid for with equipment replacement reserve fund. So what I ask Yvonda to do is to just go back from the time we had the new financial system, so 2003, and pull items paid for out of that line item. You're correct, council member Wright, that if we weren't funding police cars out of the equipment replacement reserve, they would have been purchased from some other funding source in a prior year. That's correct.
And to me, the thing that, I appreciate council member Snippers' point, but to me, the thing that was helpful about this is not that 500 is the right number or 600 is the right number, but a number that seems relatively small in a year, 500 versus 600, so only $100,000 difference, actually over a 15-year period has a significant impact. And I think it's actually probably quite hard to accurately project out what the real expenditures are gonna be, right? So they're probably like directionally correct, ballpark numbers, but so to get down to, should we be increasing it 3% or 2% a year for inflation, it is not that helpful of the discussion. It's more the difference between the two. And I would suggest, actually, if we wanted to do some sort of policy, we might look at proposing a contribution amount that's like a rolling average. So you might like take the 10-year rolling average from here going forward, 10 years, and decide on that as the number that you're gonna contribute in a given year. And then the last thing I would just say is, on the general fund balance, I would just point out to people that we are down to 18% in the proposed budget. But if you look historically, in the general fund summary, our book's not numbered, so if you go back to our budget book under fund summaries, I guess it's the third page in, and you look down at the bottom here about the year-end balance, and you take, for example, adopted was 7 million, 7.4 million. We ended up about 600,000 more than that. And if I remember correctly, when I, both Ruben and I looked at this in previous years, kind of, it's not, it doesn't show you all the estimateds or adopted versus audited. Typically, we actually do end up with a higher fund balance than we budgeted. And I think that's, you know, because we budget conservatively and we end up having open positions or what have you. So I just think we should be aware of that, that I'd be very, very surprised at the end of the year if we were, had a fund balance that was at 6.8 million and 18%. It's just something to be aware of as we think about this going forward. And then lastly, I would just say, the facility maintenance reserve, I'm a big fan of doing this, I just think it's, it's more about projecting out and knowing what your costs are gonna be. And so we should, in theory, know that we're gonna need to replace the library in X number of years, like we did the public works facility, and it's gonna cost $2 million, call it. And we can decide that we wanna finance that with debt, again, use debt as a smoothing tool as opposed to savings, but it's more just being conscious about what those costs are. I don't know that 250 is the right amount in this year, but I do think the idea of starting to commit something to it, I know in some of my proposals, I propose less than that, I think starting to project it out and commit something is a good idea.
Council member Clay?
So the only thing that I want to add to this is that regardless of whether we fund it by creating a budget line in the budget or we dedicate the unexpended reserve funds at the end of the year, we'd like to fund this to the amounts that the city manager has recommended for all of the reasons that she has stated. That was one sentence. Was it a run-on sentence, but it was one sentence.
Council member Schultz?
I applaud the idea of having a discipline for maintaining an equipment reserve and of course now the idea for a maintenance reserve. But obviously, no city council can commit, a future city council, to anything. So your numbers are just illustrative of what a certain discipline gets us or doesn't. So I think probably what we may want to think about doing is to amend the strategic plan to make it a policy that the city will follow and insert into the strategic plan something of the nature of a forward-looking, you know, not a fixed amount of dollars, but a calculation based on maybe a six-year look forward on expected capital expenditures for equipment and for maintenance. And that should be the policy that the council will, will use that calculation as a minimum and probably add a fudge factor of a million to that, or a half a million or something of that nature, so that under any, most, any reasonable circumstance, we will, the city will always have an adequate reserve, even taking into account crazy cycles in the economy or natural disasters that might cause us to have to do, pay for stuff that's not otherwise covered by insurance.
Council member Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, budget is just a planning document, and so we don't have to be exactly precise on the numbers we come up with. But my understanding is the equipment replacement reserve does not include the revenues from equipment that is sold when we buy new equipment, right?
No. It depends how it's handled, and I'm gonna, once again, look to Yvonda. There is some equipment that is sold, truly, that may not have that much value, and that just goes into the general fund. Sometimes, I believe there are sometimes trade-ins of the equipment, which would then be factored into the, you know, as an offset of the price of the equipment to be purchased. So it's not a consistent application, council member Siemens, but certainly in some instances you're correct.
Okay. And as you made these projections on, you know, for 20 years out, I didn't understand, was there any kind of escalator that was used?
There is, and I'm gonna look to Darrell if I must speak, because she's the person who actually works with the program and since, you know, there are over vehicle maintenance, she handles a lot of that. There is a interest assumption on the money that's in the equipment replacement reserve that is assumed in the calculation, and there is also, I believe, an inflation factor that is built into the program in terms of the price of equipment.
Okay. So basically, it's looking at if we, kind of the same price we have today with a little bit of an escalator for inflation, but nothing to take into account the type of increase we saw in the trash trucks a couple of years ago. Okay. Appreciate that. So what it means to me is, it's a, you know, again, it's a planning document, it's kind of a best guess on what stuff is gonna cost. And when I look at this out over 20 years, it's an average outlay of money of about $700,351 each year.
About.
So...
Yeah. But no need to be precise.
No. I didn't include the cents on there. And so, you know, I think a responsible position would be that we budget $700,000 a year. And that would be for this year, and I would certainly support a policy that says that the council should, or the city should budget, you know, on a rolling average, whether it's 10 years or 20 years, whatever.
Councilman Robinson?
Thank you all for bringing most of my points or thoughts to bear. Just to clarify where we are, our proposal is to consider an equipment reserve in addition to the, I mean, to include both an equipment replacement reserve to the, I mean, to include both an Equipment Replacement Reserve and Facilities Reserve, right? Facility Maintenance Reserve.
Yes, that's correct.
So we're kind of combining the two of them together in this, in this conversation.
It appears so, yes.
And, and also, we're not putting any of this, we're putting this down as a, kind of a wish list, but we're not, we're not committing future councils to these numbers.
No, um, I think as Councilmember Schultz alluded to, um, this will, the contribution is actually set as part of the annual budget process, um, and it's actually a clause in the actual budget adoption ordinance in terms of how much is to be allocated. Certainly, I think the council, um, you know, could pass some general policy guidelines, I mean, I think you've done that on some other issues, but ultimately, it would be up to each individual council to decide how they wanted to fund the, either reserve fund.
When you say there's a clause in the budget document, you mean each year, the, the clause will come back, in a sense, and say, this is what we, this is our policy now, and this is what we include in the future?
Yeah, I would view it as really a recommendation of the city manager to the city council in terms of the funding level, and then in the actual budget adoption ordinance, um, there is a, a section, a phrase in the budget ordinance that talks about what the council is directing in terms of the contribution to the reserve fund.
Okay, and other, other directives in our budget documents that recur each year include, for example?
Um, I'm sorry, Yvonda, go ahead.
Things like the use of fund balance.
Use of the fund balance?
Right. Um, but that's probably the most common one, is the reserve fund, as well as the use of fund balance. Anytime that we will be withdrawing monies from the fund balance, such as is proposed in my FY12 budget for paying off the community center bond, we will basically include a clause in the budget ordinance, essentially getting the council's authority and approval to basically withdraw funds from the unreserved fund balance for one purpose or another.
I'm, I guess I'm just trying to get it down into the most simple version. The, what you're proposing here is to create a new fund.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Right, yes, Facility Maintenance Reserve.
And so ongoing, when, when we get the budget, you say, well, we have this new fund, and that's why it's important to put the, um, the facilities maintenance monies into it, so, and, and the, the numbers that you have here are balanced, the year-end balance projection is based on, um, a careful analysis of what we've got and when we think it will wear out.
Correct.
Okay, and when it, when it kind of plunges precipitously in the 20s, that's because certain equipment we know is going to, or we suspect will wear out at that time.
Correct, and obviously, you know.
Just 10 years, 10 years hence, right?
Yeah, how, how far it plunges and when it plunges, if we want to use that term as a function of two things, when the equipment, it has exceeded its useful life, and how much funding we have, so.
I say plunging because it goes from 1,100,000 in the balance on the, the 500 version, to 239 in one year, and then to 96 in the next year, so.
Correct.
That's a plunge.
It moves, it moves around.
The entire fund is, is exhausted in two years. So you're planning, and, and what, what are the biggies in those two, in those two-year periods that just exhaust the fund?
I, I can look at, my memory is that it's trash trucks, um, you know, I think as you all recall, anytime you buy a trash truck, you're looking at probably close to 200,000, or a recycling truck, it's probably close to $200,000 apiece. One of the other things that I know we worked closely with the police department on, for the more tenured members of the council may recall, may recall this, when we first went into the take-home police car program, there was a, a delay in getting the initial set of cars. So what ended up happening is, I believe we got 13 of them in one fiscal year. So one of the things Daryl and I talked to the police department about this year was trying to figure out how to, to use Josh, Josh's term, smooth those police car purchases, so we didn't have all 13 continuing to hit in the same fiscal year, because that's obviously just a huge hit financially.
Right.
But yeah, there's a lot of, kind of comes and flows.
Cars and trucks, we're talking cars and trucks here, right?
Cars and trucks are the big things.
And, uh, sometimes they cost us a half a million dollars a year if we have to do a bunch of them, or in this case, yeah, overdose, that two-year period, the average is a half a million dollars in cars and trucks.
Yeah, I mean, actually, if you look at fiscal 2024, you actually have a $1.4 million number, and then back in fiscal 2029, you have a $1.1 million number. So when those things tend to hit together, it's, um, it's not a pretty sight financially.
Right, okay, so cars and trucks is really in the, in the Equipment Replacement. Uh, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of keeping our costs down as we go ahead, of course, as we all are, I think it's really important. I am glad that we're projecting ahead to know what our costs will be. Um, I know we have to anticipate inflation, which, who knows what will happen, it may get considerably worse, so these are just kind of guestimates. Can't get too much cheaper to borrow money, because we're down in the very low reaches of monies right now. Maybe we should expand the sustainability coordinator's role from environmental to fiscal and environmental. But, um, I just thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
And be glad that we're not buying ladder trucks for fire department?
Yeah.
Because they, they run a million dollars a pop. What I'd like to do at this point is check with my colleagues and see if we might want to kind of give a straw vote sense on this area that we've been talking about, in terms of the Equipment Replacement Reserve, the facility, the, the.
Maintenance Reserve.
Maintenance, Facility Maintenance Reserve, so that we have a, you know, it's not a final number, but we have a sense now, and we can kind of say, we've covered this topic. But I want to make sure somebody doesn't have another question before we do that on this particular area. Okay.
Yep. So this is having the accounts, not the amounts?
I was anticipating that it would be, that we want to set up the Facility Maintenance Reserve.
Yes.
That we, that we want to fund both of them, and a funding level that we have a comfort with now, we know that that might shift as we go to other areas, and we're, we're looking to do something, and, and you know, the city manager says, well, you know, if you want to do X, that we talk about, you know, tonight or next week, that, gee, you could, you know, you can best do that by changing the Equipment Replacement Reserve number that you're talking about by X. So we know it could change, but.
I would like to propose we have both those, those funds, and that we fund them at the average of the 20-year projection.
And do we know what that number is?
Let's, the number is in the document here, is 700,000 now, for the Equipment Replacement Reserve.
Okay, and we were going to set up the.
And we not, we weren't setting up the exact amount tonight?
No.
We were just giving direction for the staff for future reconciliation.
So, at, at that average, which is 700 and whatever the figure was?
Right.
And the Facility Maintenance, Facility, is that what it's called?
Facility Maintenance Reserve.
Facility Maintenance Reserve at the proposed level of 250.
Well, whatever the average is over the.
Since it would be new, we don't, we don't really have a good sense of that, to be honest.
Yeah, but I'm not in favor of the level funding for the ER either.
No, we're not, we're not saying that now, we're just saying, for the purposes of this budget, we're proposing tentatively 723, whatever that figure was?
700.
700,000 for the Equipment Replacement Reserve, and 250 for the Facility Maintenance Reserve. Is there a sense of, well, that's what we want to do, or we don't want to do that? How many, how many people are in favor of that at this point?
At this point?
At this point. Four. The other three folks have something you want to say, you know, it's.
Yeah, I want to lower the tax rate to the constant yield tax rate, and I'd like to, wherever it, however we can get there, I think that's a good goal, that's a goal I have.
I share your.
And I think this is a large amount of money, and, and I'm, I'm not sure that, and I think that looking 20 years into the future is a great exercise, but doesn't give us the guidance really we need, so I'm not ready to put a million bucks in there.
And I agree with Councilmember Robinson that, you know, keeping our tax rate down is an important thing for this year. My concern has been that in past, councils have used the reserves as a way of keeping taxes down and using the money for other things, not planning for the future. I think planning for the future is equally important.
Councilmembers, Snipper and Schultz?
Yeah, I wanted 600,000, yeah, this year, and then growing in later years.
I'm in favor of creating the Facility Maintenance Reserve, and if 250 seems like a good number to get started with, it's going to take a few years to build it up to a meaningful amount, got to start somewhere, that's fine. As far as the Equipment Reserve, I have a proposal here that we reduce the, the figure from the proposed 750 to 600, and I, by voting on this straw vote now, then we're not even giving that a chance to be aired. I mean, so, I mean, we start locking in numbers before we've talked about.
We're not, we're not locking it in, the discussion on this one is now. So.
Well, it sounded like it.
Make a pitch.
Yeah, there's been discussion about locking it in.
I hear that we voted for locking it in, I heard what we voted for was, based on what we know now, since we haven't been presented with trade-offs, we'd be okay with those numbers, they could go up or down slightly based on what we.
Well, then it's, okay, if it's a meaningless vote, I'm in favor of it.
But your vote is superfluous anyway, since we're.
We got to start somewhere, and we, and we got to start taking some pieces and considering them. We're going to end up considering the whole package.
You have my vote, just saying, as long as it's flexible.
Flexible till we have final votes.
Cool.
So we, so we have four people who are happy with 700, we have two people who want to go to 600, and we have a seventh person who says, whatever it takes to get to constant yield.
Yeah.
Okay. So we've now put that topic in bed for a nap, but it's not asleep, and it's not dying in its sleep.
We might be asleep, but.
Correct. And we'll have other areas to go to, I have the order that people put the lights on, so I can get back to you, and we'll take a short break, and we'll come back to this.
And we're going to solve the world's problems by consuming vast quantities of sugar and salt up here.
Yeah.
Um, I think what we can do next is talk about sustainability coordinator and environmental initiatives, and Councilmember Clay, you were the next button up.
It's like winning the lottery.
Yep.
Right.
Got to have those fast fingers.
Fast fingers, all right. Well, um, I think that there are a variety of proposals around the environment. Um, I have one that is attached to the supplemental packet for tonight, and I know that Josh has ticked off his 10 items for his green deal, and I know, Bruce, that you put out some ideas, but at the core of all of those is the sustainability coordinator. Some of the comments that I've heard about the sustainability coordinator to this point are, should the sustainability coordinator be full-time? Should they be part-time? Should those roles be integrated out through the regular activities of the staff? And more recently, the mayor said that might consider using a contractor person in the beginning, which would allow us to get someone on board right away, and possibly faster than we might hire somebody, but also might give us a little bit of flexibility in terms of more clarification about what we want from the sustainability coordinator role. I actually feel more confident in what I want from the sustainability coordinator role, and I think in one of the emails that I read, or package pieces that I read, maybe from the city manager, there was a recommendation that the, we use a contractor for the sustainability coordinator role, and that their job in the first year be a planning-oriented job to identify the activities, kind of do an inventory of the activities that the city is currently doing, and identify what the gaps are, and figure out what the things are that we think we could go forward with. And while I don't mind, and think it's important to do some planning activities around the environmental activities, um, I want to have someone on board that can actually start implementing whatever the pieces are that we finally decide on for the, um, for the activities of the sustainability coordinator, or our environmental plan that we put forward. And I will add to that, that, um, I think, I would really like to see us go forward with the Rewards for Recycling program, and I think that's something that we can, that we can do this year. I think we'd have to have an implementation plan, so, I mean, the first part of it would be to, to buy cans for, for folks and, and transfer to the city cans, and we'd have to set up a, you know, funding mechanism for it, but that's something that I think I would like to see us implement, fund and implement this year. If you look at the environmental action plan that I put out, a lot of them are actually policy changes, and have a, and, not a short term, but maybe a medium-term look to them, because we'd have to get some more information on them, but, um, I suggested in the email earlier today that I'd like to see us set aside some amount of funding for environmental initiatives into the, into this year. It might be things like helping to subsidize the coordination of, of stormwater planning on private property, it might be additional, you know, subsidizing additional trees, or additional plantings that the city might have, but I think we should have some money available to get rolling on the initiative pieces that we put forth, and, um, I think that's, that's good for me, for the introduction to the environment, and pass it on to somebody else.
May I ask a quick clarification?
Sure.
Um, when you say, are you talking about actually starting this fiscal year, FY11?
For the Rewards for Recycling?
For example, yeah.
Yes.
Ah, thank you.
Now, that doesn't mean that we would start July 1st.
No, right.
But between July 1st of 2011 and July 1st of 2012, we should be able to make the transition. So we might not implement for 10 months, but we have to have the money available in this fiscal year if we're going to start this program. I mean, I don't know, maybe, they'll tell us it could be implemented in three months, but I suspect that we can at least do it within the year.
Thank you, that's what I thought.
Councilmember Wright?
Um, I think Ewan Robinson, actually, he's, he's, has his light on.
Oh, I was, I was going with leftover lights.
We got leftover. Oh, I turned my light off, because we, before, I didn't know what we were going to talk about, but I'm.
I still, I still had them.
I'm happy to talk then. I generally, as I said before, am very supportive of us making more efforts around the environment. I think we've done a lot as a city, and probably if there actually was a scorecard and you chalked us up, we'd be at the top of the list in terms of small and medium-sized cities, but I think we want to do even more than that, I think we want to be a significant leader in this area. I, I'm a proponent of setting aside a set amount of money that we're going to start spending, um, in this coming year, and I put that number at one cent in the tax rate, so that's $185,000. I'm open to, um, how we allocate that. I do think that the sustainability coordinator is a key piece of that, um, but realizing that we know little about what a good sustainability coordinator would look like, I'm open to the idea of starting with a firm or some sort of contractual services in the first period of time. That does a couple of things, we'll probably get smarter about specifically what that person would do and what the characteristics are. A firm might allow us to have a variety of capabilities that we might not be able to get in one person. And I think also, it has the potential to let us kind of try, you know, contract with people, kind of gives us the potential to try some, try some people out, and see who's a good fit, and whether we want to hire them as a, a permanent person. So that, that, you know, I'm open to that idea, but I'm also open to if someone said no, we should, you know, if there's very strong support for doing a sustainability coordinator off the bat, I would, uh, I'd be open to that discussion as well. The biggest thing to me is that we allocate a, a portion of money. The biggest thing to me is that we allocate a portion of money and we start moving forward.
I had councilmembers Siemens, Schultz, and Robinson leftover from the first run-through, if you want to go there, or you want to...
You can stretch mine.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz?
When you hold two public hearings, and the only people that show up to testify are primarily testifying about environmental concerns, the need for a sustainability coordinator so that the various priorities of the task force and environmental action can be realized, I guess it sort of means that we need to focus on that area. It's kind of hard to say that we didn't have a cavalcade of people here saying we need to have more snowplows or something like that. So that's why in my proposal that I put here on the salmon sheet tonight, I've introduced the idea, and it's just an idea of a, at least a part-time sustainability coordinator. But like Councilmember Wright, I'm not certain whether it makes sense to have that staffing on a contractual or a person that's actually in the formal employment of the city. It seems, on the one hand, if they were in employment of the city, then you can then focus right from the beginning on finding a good person and bringing them in. It may take a while to select the person that we need, but then once we have them, you know that that person is going to grow into their job, and we're going to grow, all of us together, in experience. But on the other hand, as Councilmember Wright says, the idea of bringing somebody in on a contractual basis gives us a faster start. So I'll leave that up for us to decide a little further down the road here, but I do think it's a good idea for us to go in that direction. I just, the reason I suggested it on a part-time basis is that I feel that it's going to take time, no matter who we bring in, whether it's an outside contracted person or company or not, to get to their legs in terms of what to come apart trying to do, what's going on in Tacoma Park, and there's, because we're doing an awful lot in this area already, as is pointed out in the document that County City Manager Matthews shows us. And part of that, part of our job, I think, that job is to understand what it is we're already doing, to promote that so that citizens and others alike understand that, what we're already doing, and to find a way to build on what we're already doing. And also, it may be that certain things that we think are swell ideas, let's just say, for example, the acquisition of our streetlights, which I think at one time or another, most of us up here sort of said, well, that sounds like a really good idea. In the long run, it ought to be able to save us money, as well as being very environmentally beneficial. But we don't know what kind of politics we're going to run into with HEPCO. And it may be that that's something that even though we think that it's, we want to do it, and it should be done by all rights, we may find that it's just kind of not, it's going to take a lot longer to get to the point where we can actually do something about it. So these are the kind of things that I think our future sustainability coordinator is going to have to kind of work their way through, and I think starting maybe on a part-time basis would be an economical way to get going and build up a gradual head of steam. And then maybe in a year, the following year or the year after that, it can be expanded thoughtfully into a full-time position as our budget allows, or not, as our budget might not allow it, or, but I think it will. I think our economy is moving in the right direction, and I'm hopeful. So that's all I really wanted to say on that.
Councilmember Robinson?
I guess I put on a darker hat here when I'm thinking about the future, and I don't discount the possibility that we may be in for tough times, economic and other times, that folks who talk about global warming and other future trends aren't as rosy as they might be. And I'm all for hiring a full-time sustainability coordinator as soon as we can, partly for those reasons, because I think we're going to be in a transitionary phase that we're not, we can't even imagine right now. And I think that part of the sustainability coordinator's role is going to have to be a fiscal analysis, like you say, Fred, that do acquiring streetlights make sense? Does it make sense, both from a green perspective and from a fiscal perspective? There's all kinds of things like that. I'd rather put it in that person's hands to do that kind of analysis rather than have us adopt the TFPA's recommendations without giving it full weight and analysis. So the recycle rewards, rewards for recycling, my recollection is that it cost us a half a million dollars to buy the cans. I'm not interested. If a sustainability coordinator comes and says, it's really the best thing to do, let's do it, then, okay, I can be swayed. But for us to adopt something like that, throw another half a million dollars towards something that, at least I'm not sure of the outcome, I can't see it. So it's, I'm pretty, there's a, I just, I want to mention in passing that as far as what other cities are doing, New Jersey, who has, and that state has a lot of cities, has a pretty nifty program of having a green scorecard online that's based on a lot of interviews with each and every municipality, and that's, that kind of scorecard approach is coming into play in Maryland. University of Maryland is starting to bring that online. And I'm not sure that, how green we are, but we need to be able to compare ourselves to others, and that's, I think that kind of approach is out there, and that's the kind, another one of the things that a sustainability coordinator can pay attention to. So I'm all for hiring a sustainability coordinator, staff person, right away, and have them get to work and figure out how best to go forward.
Councilmember Snibber?
I don't think I would have had my light on.
Oh, it's on.
You didn't turn it on.
All right, fine. I'll just say, on a sustainability coordinator, I'm in favor of starting with a contractor, whether that contractor is a firm or an individual. I see an advantage to going that route, because I think trying to say, okay, we'll start out with a full-time employee, we would have to know what skills we're looking for with that person, go out and hire that person, that's going to take some time to do, and without having done some of the beginning work to explore some of these things and get our sea legs and understand it a little bit, what I see is the danger is that we end up with that full-time person and we go, oops, this isn't the right person for the job. And gee, if we had only known when we started out, we wouldn't have gotten somebody who doesn't have these skills or does have these skills. And I think if we go with a contractor of some type, we can go through some of the same exercise that we would go through in putting together a job description for a full-time person, but we could have the flexibility to say, this person really fits the bill, and they seem to have the skills, and they know what they're doing, and we can continue this route, or, gee, it's different than what we thought it was going to be, and we want to go a slightly different direction, and we're glad we have the flexibility, and we're not basically saddled with a full-time person and all of the rules and the benefits and everything else that flow from that. It's going to be much harder to change direction. We would be in the position of saying, well, what are we going to find for that person to do, because they can't fulfill what it is that we want to do now, what do we do? So I just see a contractor to start as the way to go. I think that will get us up and running much faster and give us the flexibility that we need. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to recall, Barb, you, I think, mentioned this evening that council might want to consider just putting money in and actually making a decision as far as whether it's a contractor or employee at a later date. Is that your suggestion?
I think it depends on how definitive the council is about what it's looking for, whether that be the sustainability coordinator, you know, in-house staff, contractual position, or what other initiatives. I guess my one kind of cautionary note for the council is, as you think about whatever structure you want to implement, is just remember that one staff person isn't necessarily going to have all the skills that you're going to want. When you're talking, I mean, just going through the various lists in the TFPA report, when you're talking about considering forming an electric utility, which I have worked in cities that have those, looking at streetlights, looking at recycling, I would just factor in perhaps some kind of contractual money, even if you're talking about a position, because I don't think you're going to find one person, if you hire an employee, who's going to necessarily be able to do everything that I've heard the council talk about.
Okay.
So that's, I guess, Councilmember Siemens, that's why I was suggesting perhaps an allocation of funding.
Which would be maybe used in a mix of staffing and some of the programming money that would be...
Yes.
Thank you.
Does anybody have a dollar figure that they want to put out there as a placeholder?
$185,000. I'm good with that.
Councilmember Clay is coming back to the microphone so we know what she's saying?
I will.
Well, you lost your turn, okay. Who else? Councilmember Wright's at $185,000.
I don't think we ought to be budgeting...
Just trying to come up with a guideline here.
Yeah. I think it's something that should be less than that, just to decide that it needs to be one cent on the tax rate, and then raise that amount of money and figure out what we're going to do with it later seems a little backwards to me. I think we ought to figure out what it costs to bring in a experienced consultant, because the fact whether that's in the guise of an individual or a company, or it might be, as Barbara was sort of alluding to, I gather, a pot of money that gets allocated to bring in a series of experts at various times or concurrently, who can cover the waterfront of issues that they're raised in the TFPA report, so that we can all rapidly gain knowledge and ideas of what's feasible and what's not, might be a part of the process. I mean, I'm just, you know, it's a question of how much money can you spend in one 12-month period with a brand-new program for which you've got no precedent, and I think you need to think about that, too.
Councilmember Clay?
As I said earlier, I think we should have about $50,000 in the pot of money for environmental initiatives, exclusive of the two specific things that I mentioned, which is the sustainability coordinator. And I think that, like Councilmember Schultz, we should have better information on what that is we're talking about. So if it's a firm, you know, I'd like the city manager to tell us what she thinks that costs to be able to do that. And I'm also concerned about, you know, actually being able to do implementation in this year, so, you know, that implementation with the $50,000, would we have staff to do that if we didn't have an on-staff sustainability coordinator? Would we have to have additional support for that as well, either in overtime or in some part-time support? And then I think we should look at the rewards for recycling piece and come to some decision about whether or not we could move forward with that. Do we want to pilot it in a neighborhood? The Public Works Director mentions that at some point the county was interested in paying for a pilot. Are they still interested in paying for a pilot? I'd like to know that. I don't remember this, so I don't know if it predates my time or not, but, so, you know, I wouldn't be adverse to piling it also if the council members are afraid of putting out a half a million dollar investment at this point.
And I'll just toss out a figure of 110 for the environmental area, since that's the figure that basically came into the budget after the city manager's proposed budget. It's as a result of the bringing back of some of our highway user revenue funds. I'll issue the caveat, just so the, to avoid the potential that somebody in the state legislature will think that we're doing what they thought other localities were doing in the past year or so, which is, oh, taking your highway user money and using it not for highways, but, you know, which you're supposed to do, but for other positions or things like that, as particularly municipalities in western Maryland said, gee, we had to take our highway user money and use it to pay the clerk or heat the building or whatever, and they started taking that as, oh, you're not using it for what you're supposed to. It adds into the budget. We're spending money on our roads. That money can go toward roads, but that frees up money that we had to shift from other areas to do the roads because we didn't have the HURs, so that that's, I'm just picking that figure as 110. It's represented by what came in for highway user revenues, but it's not dedicating highway user revenue money for something other than roads. And I think that's a nice, clean figure for what we might want to do, and I hear some good points by my colleagues about not wanting to lock ourselves into, say, a contractor, but it might be a mix of employee and contractor and other initiatives. I kind of like Councilmember Clay's suggestion of $50,000 for some operational changes, not necessarily full-time or contractor position, but knowing that we have some money in there, it's a piece of it, and that it's not all just going for, using up for a contractor or people. There are other lights that have now appeared, and I think they're still on this, so I'll go to Councilmember Robinson, then Siemens, then Schultz, make sure.
This is the part where we're trying to earmark a certain number for the budget.
We're trying to come up with what we want to say at this point, as, how to think about going forward. It's our piece, if, you know, again, it's not a hard and fast number, we're not deciding yet, but if we can peg it to staff members...
I don't think that the tagging it to the highway user's a good idea either. I don't think we should even do that.
It was my source for the figure.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you, but to even mention it is kind of, I don't think it's...
It self-balances.
I think, I'm more like 150. That way we have flexibility to hire somebody if we want, and we have a little bit extra to try to give that person a start, give that person a budget to work with.
Councilmember Schultz, do you have any more thoughts on this?
Well, Councilmember Robinson, for somebody who just said that they're interested in getting the tax rate down, it doesn't sound like you're going in that direction.
No, I'm establishing my own priority spread, and one is to go green and to get into a transitionary phase, and the other is to save our taxpayers' money. So this particular item I find interesting, very important. There are a lot of other items I don't find so important. For example, I think that pouring a whole lot of concrete on the ground is not necessarily a green direction to go in, and that's why I think it's a good idea to shave $100,000 off of our sidewalk funds.
Okay. Well, what I would also want us to keep in mind, and I realize we're, none of us here is right now smart enough to know what the number needs to be, but I ask that we do keep in mind that we do have other issues in the city that I think are of considerable concern, notwithstanding the fact that no one has appeared before us in these two public hearings to talk about them, and one is the condition of our housing stock, and the fact that we've got a understaffed code enforcement housing department that is having a hard time keeping up with all the demands of their job. When we heard our Housing and Community Development Director speak, I guess it was last... When we heard our Housing and Community Development Director speak, I guess it was last week, the list of responsibilities that the few people that work in that department are responsible for and carry out is incredibly long. In fact, as I said, it's admirable that they can do what they do, and I know that in my ward, for instance, the deterioration of housing and the challenge of getting people to maintain their properties is a terrible struggle. So that's an area for me that I find, in my particular ward, that, you know, all things being equal, I would like to see our budget grow in that direction. Maybe that can't be done this year, and maybe this year we're going to focus on environmental issues. That's well and good, but I just, I think when we're talking about figures in the 150,000, 185,000 category, we're sort of taking a ready-fire-aim approach to environmental programs, and I think we need to start out small and grow the program in a unidirectional sort of way, rather than sort of saying, let's just start shooting and see, find out later where the enemy is. I would encourage frugality a little bit in this direction.
Might I suggest at this point that we say that we're interested in providing funding in this area, and that I would throw out there a possible range of from 100 to 185,000. That's kind of the spread that I've heard, and as we go through the budget more, we can kind of put numbers together. The city manager might be able to come up with a number or some numbers that would help us refine that. Councilmember Wright, you have some comments?
I'm okay with the idea of a range at this point. I would really push us to be, but I think a lot of people have mentioned at the higher end of that range. I think Colleen mentioned 50-plus a person, which I think, fully loaded, it gets you pretty close to the 185. I think I've heard 150. I would propose 185, because I don't, I guess I disagree a little bit with Councilmember Schultz. I do agree we don't know exactly what we're going to do, but I think it's going to be very easy to find very high-value environmental efforts we can spend $185,000 on, and I don't feel at all like it's, it's like figuring out, you know, we're like shooting the cannon before we've measured, you know, we've aimed it. I think it's much more sort of like, if anything, we're like, you know, using a pistol and we need an 80-millimeter cannon in terms of the need for more environmental effort. So that's why I would push forward with the higher end of that range at 185.
80 millimeter isn't very big. Thinking centimeter?
Yes, I was.
Okay, 80 centimeter.
We could go back to like the US managers and say a 25-inch gun.
Okay, okay. Other comments on this particular area? Okay, we've still got a little time left before people are going to get antsy to get out of here. Is there some other area that we would like to cover?
We have some small items.
Somebody want to propose some small items that we can deal with?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll come up with one. It might be one of yours.
Okay.
My proposal for the Miller paper, I think people have strong opinions on that one, and we can either, you know, say what we want to do with that. Is that a good one to do?
Well, I was going to do one that I thought everyone would agree on.
Oh, okay.
Which was adding an additional leaf collection for properties located on state highways, which is in the little discussion. That's a, you know, $3,900 item.
Is Councilmember Snapper correct? Everybody agrees with that one? Anybody want to shoot that one down? Anyone want to take the 25-centimeter, 25-inch gun to that one?
So you're proposing we go from one to two?
Yes.
Same as where everyone else gets in the town, basically.
I'd be supportive of that.
I think there's, you'd add a support for that one.
It's not insane.
I have the sense that I put the Miller paper out there, but I have the sense that a lot of people disagree with that, so do we want to deal with that one?
Absolutely.
I'll put the money for the Miller paper on the table to remove from the budget.
I totally disagree with you.
You disagree? I, if it saves us money and gives us better roads in the future, it's a worthwhile investment. If it saves us money, I mean, let's save ourselves some money.
And I was looking at it primarily as we've, it's been proposed and removed from the CIP for two years running. It's now back in because we keep saying we can slide one more year. We would like it very much, it has the benefits, but it's something that could slide if we needed to, to find the money to balance the budget.
The primary reason it wasn't in the current fiscal year budget is with the Public Works renovation. The last thing we needed was another piece of equipment to try to figure out where to park. That was really more the reason why it wasn't in the FY11 budget.
But it does have a payback period, does it not?
Yes.
And how long is the payback period? Don't know, five years?
Longer.
Sign language doesn't work.
Ten years?
Ten, fifteen years?
Ten years. But we don't, and the payback is based on contractors we don't have to use. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
But the thing has a lifespan of 20 years. So it pays back in 10, we get 10 years of gravy 10 years out, and it's 100 and some thousand dollars.
106,000 dollars.
Yeah, I think we should put it on the table. I think it's a good investment.
And that amount is figured into whatever we were talking about earlier for the Equipment Replacement Reserve or not?
It's a new item.
So it's not in there? So it would influence what we were talking about earlier? Other thoughts?
No more thoughts.
Councilmember Clay and then Councilmember Schultz.
One of the things that I found a pretty compelling argument was when our Public Works Director was talking about how difficult it is to get a contractor to come out and do little items.
Right.
And one of the principal complaints of my constituents at this point is the poor condition of roads. And while granted, a lot of that is on state highways, there are in fact poor road conditions in the neighborhood, and sometimes it's been difficult to get people to come out and do the, in the 400 block of Boyd, you know, it took a while, I think, to get some of that done, and so I think that it's worthwhile. And the other thing I want to say about, you know, okay, so it costs our constituents, what does this cost? $110,000? I just paid another $3,000 on my car following like $1,500 I paid earlier, which is significant only because the kind of damage that I have paid for on my vehicle since I moved to Tacoma Park is like no damage I've ever paid in my, I got my first car when I was 18, so what's that, almost 30 years. It's damage that gets done from driving your car into potholes, you know? It's ties and cracked, you know, cracked components of the engine and things like that. So, you know, I think that in the long run, it could end up saving people a fair amount of money, actually, even just personally.
Councilmember Schultz?
I just think that in addition to the gradual payback is that the, based on the Director's comments last week, is that it just give that department much more flexibility to respond to the problems that we face on all the streets, you know, throughout, the little things, because oftentimes it's the little pothole in front of a person's house or on one particular street that'll drive people absolutely crazy. They're, and that's the only thing that really, they want the city to take care of, or something like that that needs to be taken care of. It's too small, as you were saying last week, to bring in a contractor to do it. It's just, it's ridiculous, so you have to sort of save it up until you get a whole bunch of these things. So it'll allow you to be much more responsive to people like me, and that should make everybody happy. And that's why I think it's a really important item that we have this capability.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you. Darrell, I had a couple of questions. Excuse me if I don't seem very smart on this subject, but how does it work now if you need to have a street milled or?
Generally, now with major streets where we're talking about a length of a block or more, we'll use our indefinite quantities contractor on a schedule of either the fall or spring to do the road repair. Those are those streets that are going to be listed on the street, the capital budget, the street restoration or repaving. The smaller areas, pothole, we do a lot of temporary patch for pothole where our crews with cold patch go out on a routine basis and just fill potholes, knowing that it's a temporary process. If we have a section of a street, say a small, you know, 15-foot or 10-foot area where it's alligatored or it's crumbling, and we know there's a problem, in the past, what we've done is dispatch our employees. They, we rent a saw cutter, we sometimes rent a roller, we take it out to the site, we saw cut the asphalt, we use our loader to excavate, you know, damaged asphalt, replace whatever the sub base we need. It's basically done manually with the staff and the equipment that we have, and then we'll get a load of asphalt, we'll put it down, we'll roll it, we'll, you know, complete the job.
What's kind of the smallest area? I mean, I think of these millers, and I see these big pieces of equipment to do a lane at a time. What size machine are you?
It would, I believe, and it's been a while since I look at it. I think it's either a four or five-foot width mill distance. It's not the major, you know, ones that our contractor uses where they can do eight feet or 10 feet at a time. It's more in the four to six-foot range width.
So this isn't something you'd do a whole block with, then?
No. If you had that much to do, it'd be much more cost-effective to hire a contractor to do, and we have that, you know, in place.
Okay, because one of the things that worries me in these kind of purchases is that we don't end up talking about staff time, and obviously, if you're going to have a piece of equipment, it's of little use if you don't have staff assigned to use it.
Well, it will be a significant, like now, we have a crack filling operation, so we have an employee and a temporary laborer who, through several weeks of the year, that's all they do, crack filling, and so it would be added to their task, so there'd be less crack filling, more, you know, more paving done in those jobs. Oftentimes, the crack filling areas, at least the way we've been doing it in the past few years, is really a kind of a last-ditch effort in an area that needs to be milled and paved, but it's not a whole street, it's just a section of road. So we transition and do the milling paving there rather than the crack filling.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll just say that I wanted this on the reconciliation list, and I brought it up because I was trying to look for responsible ways to add and to subtract, to try and just get us to an equilibrium on the budget where we could be comfortable, because I know there's a lot of pressure to add things. I was looking for areas to subtract, but I understand the benefits of this machine.
If you want to talk about highway user funds and an appropriate expenditure of highway user funds at about $110,000.
That's the one.
This seems like the appropriate expenditure.
Yes. So my sense is that the council wants to leave that in the proposed budget.
I would just add, I think it will generally pay for itself. I would only propose cutting if it were the only way that we were able to find funds to fund 185,000 for the environmental efforts.
Can you remind me, Mayor, of which items we've removed from the budget tonight? Never mind.
Just did.
The city manager asked us not to identify places and to give her a chance to look at the budget, as I recall at the beginning.
But if we were to come up with something?
I mentioned the 100,000 on the sidewalk.
Other areas that people want to cover? Did you have something?
No, I just wanted to call the council's attention to the one staff item which had to do with the cable television franchise agreement, and this was something that Suzanne and I talked about late last week.
Sorry, is that in the blue or the salmon?
It was in both, actually. You can take your pick. As Suzanne indicated, I think during her budget presentation for communications, is our cable television franchise agreement between, with Comcast will expire in June of 2012. Some other municipalities, I think including Rockville and several others, have hired an attorney to kind of work with them on the franchise agreement, and I guess staff's recommendation would be that we participate in that effort. The most that I think Suzanne estimates it would cost would be approximately $4,300.
It feels like Christmas.
I think we definitely need to do that.
I would agree with that.
I mean, we can either allocate funding specifically for this purpose, or we can just sort of ride the legal budget and see how it turns out, though that's obviously running the risk. I mean, that's obviously probably one of the areas where we are guesstimating what may come up.
And maybe what we should do is also mention that related to that is the question of the PEPCO rate issues that we had talked about, this possibility for putting some money in for, again, the cooperative effort with other municipalities and the lawyer who has been retained by the Montgomery and Prince George's chapters, that that's kind of in that same vein of, we don't know what the number is, we know that we have common interests with other municipalities, and if we want to commit to having some monies available to help that go forward, we can, we should be able to get a lot of bang for our buck with cooperating.
Just ask one question, that's when my light's lit. What do we mean when we say past legal fees have been paid by the cable companies?
Yeah, I was going to mention that.
Because it seems contradictory that the.
They pay for. Well, in the past, as the franchise agreements have been negotiated, there have been some funds that the cable companies have put forward to the costs of doing the franchise agreement, and so the costs for the legal assistance for the municipalities in the past have been paid by the cable company whose franchise was up. There have been some changes in law, and there's some kind of preferential changes that might mean that the cable company wouldn't pay for it this time, but it's, there's a good chance that it will pay for some of the costs. So it's just one of those things we're not going to know till pretty much well into the process, and it's important that the municipalities, the legal service to the municipalities happens kind of early in the process because it's part of our negotiation with the county to make sure that the proposal that goes to Comcast represents the interests of all of us.
Of course.
So it's one of these things that unfortunately, we're not going to kind of know till the end of the process if we're going to need to pay the funds or not.
But it just, it seems to me that we ought to be thinking in these terms regardless, that we ought to have our own legal resources in hand to take care of our, defend the municipalities' mutual interests regardless of.
That's why we're putting that forward.
Yeah, just always, so we don't have to worry about whether the cable companies are going to help us or not.
That's right.
Okay. So, Councilmember Robinson?
Do we get feedback from the lawyer, will we get feedback from the lawyer about the issues that are, the important issues during this? Is that something that will change from prior years?
Will we get feedback from the lawyers?
You're proposing that we go into a collaborative effort to hire a lawyer to promote our rights or our position in the talks about the franchise fees, and in the past, the cable companies have paid for this. Have we had their, we had attorneys tell us where our position is or what, to inform us? I have to admit, I can't remember in the past getting information about the negotiations from the cable.
I think there's been just a little bit. I'm actually going to be in a meeting with the attorney on Wednesday with the other municipalities, and I'll find out more information and bring that back.
And is this the right place to talk about the use of these cable funds? Is this something, in the, last Thursday, there was a discussion about, well, what do the regs or the contract, what does the contract really say? And there was some consternation about what it really says as to what we can use, whether it all has to be for equipment or can be used for other things. And that seems like it's such a large amount of money that that would be a very good thing for us to clarify as quickly as we could.
Yeah. The discussion of how to use the funds, I think, can wait. We do have the representative from the county coming on the 31st.
May 31st.
And she can talk about what the provisions are currently. However, one of the things that is important to all the municipalities and the county is that as they're going forward negotiating this with Comcast, that they work out a deal that maybe gives us more operating funds and less capital oriented funds. So both of those, both of those discussions should take place. I'm not able to answer those questions this evening, but it is something that we'll both hear about what's existing and then how the negotiations go with Comcast.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, both cable and PEPCO rates are areas where specialized counsel.
Makes sense.
Yeah, makes sense, are necessary if we want to get the most out of the process. Should I put out there that we want to, we want to include both the, do we want to include $4,300 or do we want to, is that the figure that we need to include for?
For the cable franchise, I think that would probably be the outer limit based on what we know about the other municipalities participating in the likely cost.
Okay. And then on, on the PEPCO, it's hard to know a figure. I'll say that the figure that has been in my mind as a placeholder figure, but based on, I'm not sure I could explain why that figure is in my head, but the figure was But I don't know and there's, I'm trying to set up meetings with the attorney who has been hired and the people who are going to talk about how we can go forward on this in the next, I'm trying to set the meeting up for in the next two weeks and we'll know more, but I'm not sure what to put in as a placeholder. Are people interested in putting a placeholder amount and just as an arbitrary one, 10?
Sure.
And we might have more information as we, as we get closer to exactly how we're having to do it and that's one of those things that the city manager might be able to put a more refined figure in, see what the other municipalities are putting in, because we don't know those figures yet. And these meetings in the next two weeks would hopefully come up with that.
That makes sense.
Other items that we can easily dispatch from whatever list of things we've got or something else that somebody thinks we can do in a relatively short period of time given that it's 10/22?
Do I have a light on?
Sorry, go ahead.
I have two things on the list and I don't know how fast they are. Wanted to talk about youth diversion activities, but I'm not sure we have, we, have we settled on a definitive answer how we can do that and the HCD coordinator. But what I wanted to, what I wanted to say that I didn't say in the first round when we were talking about specific items is that I'm actually still concerned about the process that we're going through. And I know that in the beginning you said you wanted to have everything out here so that we could let the city manager get all of the information, but you know, right now we're, we're almost at 10:30. I think there are many more things to talk about and we have one more night where we really have scheduled reconciliation and we have the entire evening, but we have a lot of, I think, really bigger unresolved issues. And in the six years that I've been doing this, I don't think I've ever been through a budget process with everybody where we actually have so many big elements of things that are in, in play. I mean, even if you think about just the, the green initiatives and the issues around the sidewalk fund, those are two really big issues in play. Whereas before we've been, we've been communicating around, you know, between $100,000 to $200,000 worth of around the edges changes to the city manager's budget and that's not really what we're talking here, about here tonight. So I continue to be concerned about the push to do that and I note that, you know, we have into June to, to pass a budget and I don't want to sort of sweat it out like we did last time, but we're not, right now we're scheduled for like the 6th and the 13th or something. So I wanted to put that out there.
16th to 23rd and we have to do it by?
You actually have until July 1st to pass a budget. You only have until the 23rd to establish a tax rate.
Right. And that's what we did last time, we settled on the tax rate and then we finished out the other items. So I'm not sure, I mean, you know, maybe we should save the sidewalk fund and other things related to it until the beginning of the next session. Could we talk, could we get through the HCD coordinator? I know Fred put that out in his list and I know that our HCD director would probably be really happy, a little bit of relief on the coordination of the activities.
A follow-up question on the scheduling. I know that you have to get information to the county ahead of time. What's our real necessity for having to decide the budget deadline?
I'm not sure.
As long as you, as long as we establish the tax rate, we can delay the rest of the decisions until?
You have to have a budget obviously in place for July 1st.
Right.
Given that close to 60% of your operating revenues are set by the tax rate, I'm not sure, given some of the different feelings, how you sort of isolate one piece of it from the other.
Well, that's what I'm saying is when, what is our real deadline for?
For the tax rate, we, it has to be, we have to, Yvonne and I have to provide a, the tax rate that is going to be billed by the county. We had to do it, I believe, by the 23rd, because I think, Yvonne, is the date, the 25th or the 28th of May?
Off the top of my head, I think it's like the 26th.
Right.
Shortly after our, our last meeting for the second.
It's that same week of the week of the 23rd. We don't remember the exact date, but you don't.
The 23rd of May?
Of May.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilor Ray?
I still remain concerned about the amount of money we want to spend in aggregate on sidewalks. So I would like to have that discussion. I don't know if we have it tonight. I don't know if we want to have a straw poll of where people are on that. Maybe everyone's okay with the number that's proposed, but I just think based on what I've heard from residents as well as I think the other ways that those funds could be used related to public safety, either to, and I know the city manager asked us not to come up with money for the things we, we propose specifically, but I do want to give some sense of prioritization. So that money could be used for public safety where then funds could be used for something else. But I also think that there might be higher or better uses in the public safety realm in general if we're going to spend, spend money, either through more programs to address youth that are gang susceptible or whether it's, you know, looking at the camera proposal that we have from the chief. I just think those things are, it's not that we should spend all that money on something else, but just the amount, the $875,000 for sidewalks when we're, when we only spend $500,000 on, on streets is a little bit, I think, not quite proportionally correct. So I'd be interested in trying to have a discussion about that issue.
What I'm tempted to say is that maybe we ought to start off next Monday's discussion with speed camera funds and associated issues in terms of what other area, if we, if we reduce that or we move things in from public safety, if, you know, all those changes associated with that. I feel like if we get started into it tonight, we, we would have to kind of arbitrarily have a cutoff and then pick it up again and it's a little harder to do that way. Does that make sense? So we'll put that as the first thing we address next Monday?
Okay. Make a request.
Sure.
We'd hope that the city manager then would provide a photo for all the other council members of where the sidewalks exist in the city so that they can see the equity issues that we're talking about. Because I'm certainly willing to put out as a, as a possible funding mechanism that the people who enjoy the benefits of all the sidewalks fund their own sidewalks through the lighting and landscaping assessment district if the people in Ward 2 and Ward 6 are going to continue to pay for sidewalks that they don't enjoy. The other thing I'd ask the city manager to do is to clearly, again, split out the difference between what are the ADA improvements and what are actual new sidewalk dollars. So we're talking about those things separately.
Because I think the proposal was 300 on ADA and 575 on new?
Part of it, yeah, and part of it's planning. But I also have suggested before that we change some of that funding so that we can do some other things with it, that we don't have to spend that much on sidewalks. I just want to, you know, be clear that there are the other equity issues too, because I would like to see us spend some of that money on the, on youth diversion and other kinds of activities and a little more broad based without losing kind of what we have.
Is the, is the city manager clear on that last piece from Councilmember Clay in terms of what, if, what you need to provide for next Monday?
I understand the request for the map of existing sidewalks and Councilmember Clay, just so I'm clear, there's the figures the mayor just mentioned, the proposed $300,000 for ADA installation and 575, 575,000 for new installation. Is there something?
I just want to be clear, you know, it's not, it's not all that we're building new sidewalks. I mean, part of it's part of the 10-year ADA compliance plan.
Correct.
I think we should be clear about what's part of compliance planning and what's part of the sidewalk planning in Ward 2 and Ward 6 and then what's implementation of sidewalks. Because like for me personally in Ward 2, you know, we have yet to have the initial process conversation. I don't think we're going to be pouring a lot of concrete this next year.
Right. And we did not anticipate that there would be much poured in Ward 2.
Except, except maybe the people on Prince George's who'd like their gap.
Yeah. I think I'm clear. If I have any questions, I'll follow up with Councilmember Clay about her request.
And can I add on that?
Sure.
To look, I'm, I think I'm hearing that we want to look forward and see what the goal is for sidewalks in Ward 6 and Ward 2 and how we'll get there and how much we have to spend to get there. Am I right? To get us to some sort of equity position or some feeling that we're getting, we have the sidewalks where we want them, when we want them. So if you can, if you can look, look into the future a little bit so that we know how much will, given this plan, how much we'll have to spend for this many years and given this plan.
What I would say is I can tell you what came out of the study. I think given the very, the various opinions expressed by members of the council, I'm not sure I can tell you how long it would take there based on what you want, because quite candidly, I'm not sure what you all want.
Yeah, that's true.
But I can at least try to break, break up the figures in a way that perhaps might be more meaningful and helpful for you.
We all remember the $40 million.
Correct.
We're all still shaken in our boots from that $40.
Yeah, we can try to provide a little bit more of a breakdown on the figures that we have and hopefully that might help you in your discussions.
I think phase, phase one is like $1.2 million or something like that. It's the $41 million figure that is being used to frighten people was the tool designs, analysis of what would happen if you stuck a sidewalk in every potential place you could stick a sidewalk in the city. And I don't think I've heard any council member articulate that they're looking to stick a sidewalk.
Oh, that takes great panic.
Everywhere that there could possibly, here, estimated cost of phase one sidewalk improvements, 1.2 to 2.3 million dollars.
Then Colleen, the, if, if the tool design study said it's $40 million to put sidewalks everywhere and what we're talking about here is appropriate sidewalks in wards 2 and 6, I think maybe what we need to, what I need to hear is, well, what's appropriate level of sidewalks? Is it 41 million divided by 6 and that's per ward or is it, you know, it's no, no, in Ward 2 we need this many sidewalks and here's where we'd like them and that will cost this amount and then this will, it will take us this many years to put them in the way we want?
Well, I think.
That's part of the discussion.
Right. And I think that the, and Fred, I think, might agree with me that for wards 2 and Ward 6, we still have to, I still have to talk to people a lot about where they would want sidewalks and what goes on and I think that he's in that process. I think it's, it's, the reason I asked you to provide the map, because people haven't looked at it for a while, it's very interesting. Because the ward that seems to be covered in all but on maybe Sligo Mill and Fifth or Orchard appears to be, you know, Ward 3 and it appears to have double sidewalks on each side and you get a lot of that through Ward 1, but interestingly, Ward 1 in the farthest north section has a whole area around Richmond and Chesapeake and Potomac and Ray and they don't have any sidewalks in there. So there's some missing sidewalks in, in, missing sidewalks on Ward 1.
Well, I could tell you on Fifth and, Fifth and, in that area, there's no way you'll get sidewalks even on one side.
But is it, but is it, but it's presenting.
The road's so narrow now.
The map is very telling.
We don't want to get into the full discussion.
Right. So I think we should provide the map and then we could.
The city manager can provide for next week.
Or you could come down here and look at that.
I think, yeah, we're having the conversation to decide if we're going to have the conversation next week.
Yeah, it's good. It's preparatory.
It's just sort of a warm-up, right?
Tell us how much time we're going to need to talk about. Why don't we talk about the HCD coordinator?
Yeah. And I have a couple items.
Before we leave the sidewalk issue, I just have one, I'd like to make one other point.
One last.
That's okay.
Yes, and the city manager.
It was suggested that perhaps, you know, certain parts of the city have more sidewalks and then therefore people should pay some kind of sidewalk tax as a result of that. And I don't think we should like start pitting wards against each other. I've said from the beginning that we have more sidewalks in my ward. I'm totally comfortable with having the vast majority of the sidewalk money spent in other areas. Everyone who walks the metro walks on sidewalks in Ward 1. The tax rate in, the tax assessed values of properties in Ward 1 are higher than just about anywhere else in the city. So they're already paying their fair share. And so I don't think we should start trying to pit one ward against the other. I'm totally on board that we should look at where sidewalks are and where they're needed and we should allocate resources appropriately. I just think the amount of total dollars in the scope of what we're looking at on the budget is high on sidewalks. And I think you've said you're not sure that we should spend all that money on sidewalks either, it's just.
Right. But what I, but what I, what I hear coming, I think from both you and Dan, is that, you know, it's that, do we really need to spend this much money on sidewalks? And so even though it's not overt, you know, if you're somebody who's sitting in Ward 2 or Ward 6 and you'd like to have sidewalks on your street and other folks do and the people who are saying, are we, do we really need to spend this much money on sidewalks or the people who have the most coverage for sidewalks in their ward, you know, how is, for people in Ward 2 and 6, they can, they can read that as pitting one ward against the other, because the ward who already has it is saying, we don't need to keep spending money on this.
No, that's not what we.
But I'm telling you that that's, that's how people hear it.
I'm questioning how much we're spending. I've already said that I am okay with the vast majority of that money being allocated to those wards that don't have it. I think that totally makes sense. And all those people who live in, many of those wards who walk to the metro are also walking on sidewalks in Ward 1 or when they go to Old Town, it's not like a sidewalk. And I live on Maple Avenue, there's a sidewalk in front of my house. People from all sorts of wards traverse Maple Avenue, right? So it's, it's not just about the people in that ward benefiting.
Well, the same would be true for Ward 2 though, because, I mean, the whole point of the public works department is that if you, if you put a sidewalk along Boyd to Lincoln or Larch to get over to New Hampshire Avenue, that you create connectivity to those areas. But we don't have that benefit and if we did, you know, you could make the same argument there.
I think also that part of this, part of this discussion really is where did side, where are sidewalks now and why are they there? And in part, they're there because there was demand for them, it seemed appropriate at the time, in the past, they were closer to the urbanized areas, people walked more in those areas. And wards, parts of wards 2 and 6 are farther away from, at least from Old Town. Of course, they're not farther away from Langley, from Tacoma Langley, so, so these are, these are important. I mean, I lost her, but that's my point.
No, I heard you. He whispered something in my ear. No, I hear you, but again, if you look at the map, you'll see that there's gaps in that. The other argument that was, was stated for a long time about sidewalks and, and what Kathy Porter's argument was around it and I think Bruce's argument for the, for a long time is that people had sidewalks in front of their places because they were installed by developers and therefore the developers had paid for those amenities and therefore those people initially paid more for their properties and therefore they paid higher taxes and therefore their higher taxes funded the replacement of the sidewalks. But to, to believe that, you'd have to engage in the idea that people, you'd have to at least entertain the idea that people get services in this city allocated based on the amount of taxes that they, they pay. And I don't believe that's the kind of city that we are.
And I don't necessarily want to be labeled by that, but.
Well, your, your comments on sidewalks have transitioned and when, when you ran for office and we had those conversations about how do we have these hard conversations and how do we fund things that are meaningful to people in the city, you committed to finding a way to have this discussion and to help. You committed to finding a way to have this discussion and to help identify funding resources, and this was pre.
Yes, that's true.
This was pre-sidewalks, so you weren't, as some have implied, you know, agreeing to actually spend budget money, because it's all seven up, so you get to do that. You agreed in principle to allow the conversations to happen and to have that move forward. Everybody moves forward in their thinking, I, I spent my first 25 years of my life as a diehard Republican, and now I'm a diehard Democrat.
You went reverse, usually people get.
I know, they get more conservative when they get older, but.
That's so great.
Anyway, so, yeah, I mean, but, but that was, I'm just trying to, like, that was the thinking of the entire council for a long time.
Maybe. City manager has something she needs to say.
I'm almost hesitant, just in case I stir everything up again. The only thing I was.
You don't want to get caught in the middle.
No, the only thing I was just going to say that might be helpful, and I'll, I was just asking Jesse if she could remember when it was, but at one point, it might have even gone back as far as a year ago, staff had presented from the sidewalk study what were the connections in the city that we were trying to create by the construction of new sidewalks, and I'll resurrect that information, because that might be helpful to the council in your discussions next week, so you can actually visually see the pathways we were trying to create.
Does that conform with the master plan?
Don't go there.
Well, because there were connections.
Right.
That was one of the ones.
I think so.
I always am.
Yeah. And I'll just say that in terms of the past discussions by councils, of which I was a part, about sidewalks, the difficulty was always, gee, how are we going to come up with money to fund new sidewalks where there are no sidewalks? And various discussions revolving around, well, gee, if you have sidewalks, that increases the value of your house, and so it's kind of tied to house value, which then gets tied to assessed value, taxes, and those kinds of things, so that, so that maybe the way to fund them, since we didn't have any other way to fund them, was special assessment, which put the cost on the people who were going to get the improvement, which would then improve the value of their house, et cetera, et cetera. So it was in that way that the council talked about, how could we possibly find a way to fund sidewalks? And I, I'll, rather than adjourning at this point, let me.
Oh, no.
I was, no, 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 I was going to try and do a simple one. We had one more simple one on the city manager's memo, which was the additional right-of-way trash cans in Ward 6. And it was identified that there were a cost of $1,600 per installation. Is that something that we need to allocate a particular amount for, or just to say, yes, we need something in there?
I think that if there's a sense, and this item was actually raised by Councilmember Schultz, there may be similar interest on other parts, on the part of other council members. I think if there's a sense of the number of installations in the city that you might want to add new cans to, we would just simply multiply it, and that funding would need to be allocated to the public works budget.
What I would, what I would like to do is sort of, in that regard, two things, try to, in the end, this next week, before our next council meeting, is try to generate some feedback from residents in New Hampshire Gardens and Hillwood Manor as to where they think they would like to have these facilities. Because I, frankly, you know, I, I don't want to make that kind of decision unilaterally. Second of all, I appreciate maybe some feedback from the Department of Public Works on where they seem, from her experience within the city, or, you know, and I don't need to know that tonight, where they seem to be, what are the productive and obvious kinds of locations that seem to work best from a functional and an aesthetic point of view? And it also occurred to me that since we're building some sidewalks this coming year in Ward 6, is, is there, should, should we think about, with those locations where those, those cans might go, you might want to modify the sidewalk design a little slightly to create a little concrete patio for them, or something of that nature? But those are, that's all I really want to say tonight on that particular subject.
So we can get a suggestion for a possible amount?
Yeah. So I know what I'm talking about, four, or 10, or 14. I don't think it'll be that high. I think it'll be at the lower end.
Okay. So that'll enable us to get a dollar figure on that one next time. Anything else that we need to do this evening?
The HCD.
I have a couple requests.
Next, next week.
You want to keep going?
I have a couple quick questions that I want to request for next week.
Go ahead.
There are two things. One is that I'd like to ask Darrell if maybe during the next week, you can come up, it's kind of like you did with regard to the, the paper you provided us tonight on paying for trash collection, something about what, what the cost and implications might be with alternate side of the street parking that would allow the city to be able to absolutely clean, sweep all, all gutters in the city. Because I think it's a great idea, but I have no idea what I'm talking about when it comes to fiscal implications and practical implementation things, and that, that would be appreciated. The other thing that would be addressed to the chief, in light of the sur, apparent surge in gang activity, which I know we're all concerned about, but it's being a little bit more manifest, we have a police officer, I believe, that's funded through Speed Camera. Given the seriousness of this issue, this problem, I'm just wondering if it makes sense for us to think about putting something like that, or figuring out a way to make the gang coordinating officer, whether it needs to be larger, or if it needs more tools, or anything of that nature, so that we can enhance our efforts in that area. And I, I'm just thinking that might be something that I'd like to get some feedback on before next Monday night. That's all. Thank you.
Any other items from Monday? Anything else, anybody has a burning desire that we have to talk about tonight?
I was just going to comment, in terms of the support for cultural events coordination, would just remind the council that there's already $10,000 in the budget for that purpose.
Okay. So we will have additional items to talk about next Monday, starting with Speed Camera and associated pieces. Roger.